I'd like to call the meeting for the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order. Madam Clerk, please establish a quorum.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, for your first afternoon item, number 35 is the Arden Creek Town Center Linderman Appeal Fee Waiver Request.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director. The item before you is a fee waiver related to the Arden Creek Town Center project. The project is a renovation of an existing center at Arden and Watt with the addition of several building pads. The merits of the project are the subject of your agenda item number 36, but this item is a request to waive the appeal fees for a private individual. The project was approved by the zoning administrator on August 16th of 2017. The SEQA document utilized for that approval was a negative declaration. There have been two appeals filed. The first appeal was filed by the Arden Arcade CPAC. That appeal otherwise would have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the Planning Commission sitting as the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have been informed by the CPAC that we do not expect to have a representative of the CPAC here today. The second appeal that was filed was filed by Ms. Julie Linderman to the board and on the basis that no environmental impact report was prepared. And it's that provision that has elevated the appeal from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Board of Supervisors. The request to waive the fees, the fee amounts are $3,935. The zoning code does speak to this. Section 6.1.3. D of the zoning code says, "The Board of Supervisors should consider whether there was a staff error or other special circumstances that justifies the waiver." So the board does have discretion with regard based on that provision. Ms. Linderman has provided a justification for the request for a fee waiver. That is summarized in the board report as well as her original materials or attachment to that board report. The items that are referenced include that an individual should not bear the cost of an appeal that is a matter of public interest, that the appeal is made on behalf of many community residents, that the appeal procedures were not clearly provided, that the staff report may not have been complete and accurate and may not have included all correspondence, that the zoning administrator approved the project despite opposition, and then that a negative declaration should not have been adopted. The staff recommendation before you is for denial of the waiver. Staff does not believe that there has been any error in processing of the approval of, in processing of the project, in approval of the project by the zoning administrator, and that a negative declaration is the appropriate SEQA document. So that concludes my staff presentation.
Any questions for LeAnn? Okay, thank you. We'll hear from Julie Linderman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson and Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Linderman, if you could stand in front of the podium with the two microphones. You can put your exhibits there on the white surface. Thank you. That'll be easier for us to hear you.
Okay, but we short people.
It can be lowered a little bit.
That's okay.
Low as it goes, okay.
Okay, so I'm Julie Linderman, and I'm here to request the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors grant a waiver of the filing fee of $3,935 that I submitted on August 28th to appeal the zoning administrator's approval of the project known as Arden Creek Town Center. That was the zoning administrator's hearing on August 16th. And just to clear up any possible confusion, I need to tell you that this appeal does not reflect at all a desire to stop, hinder, curtail quality commercial development in Arden Arcade. Heaven knows, we need quality, community-sustaining new development. What this appeal speaks to is a reasonable demand for fairness and equal treatment under the law, including the adherence to the zoning codes, with deviations allowed only in times of special need or circumstances. What this is about consistent, clear interpretation of the code or revisions to the codes being made by due process, not erosion of the codes by bad precedent begetting bad precedent, which was the case in this hearing issue. I'm requesting a waiver of the filing fee because though I'm a single individual filing the appeal, I filed it so that the public's interest in a matter of community development and zoning application, zoning application, can be heard by the board. The people's, you are the people's only elected accountable representatives in matters of local land use, development, and law. My individual appeal with a personal payment was made on behalf of many community residents, and I don't know if this shows up well or not, but last Friday we started a petition. I have a bigger copy, electronic petition, and as of last evening, over 108 people had signed this petition recognizing that they are registered voters, they are interested in my fee being waived because it's made on the behalf of many. Apart from filing a formal appeal and paying the fee, the county residents, property owners, taxpayers seemingly have no other codified means to seriously voice their interests and concerns to the elected authorities who are charged with guiding and directing fair and beneficial community development. We recognize the process of seeking input through the CPACs, but that testimony is not always documented. Printed meeting minutes are often one or two sentences long, and the county's planning staff are free to rewrite the minutes as they did in this report supporting the zoning administrator. Then they are also free to not use or use their discretion any information that's heard or decided at a CPAC meeting. They did not refer the CPAC conditions to the zoning administrator for approval, and you know, that's part of the rules of the game, but there's nothing I can find in the code that lets the people who are most likely to be affected by a zoning administrator's decision have any standing before the government except this pay-to-play appeal process. County staff have failed to provide information, documented policies and procedures, rules and applicable codes to clarifying zoning administrator approvals. So putting up the $3,935 and filing an individual appeal seems like the only way in the door, but it doesn't seem like the fair way. The county staff had suffered confusion in telling the CPAC whether or not they could appeal. First, they said they didn't, they couldn't, and I have actually emails from the CPAC chair saying that the county's adamant they can't appeal. Then they changed their mind, then said they could appeal, and they changed their mind just a couple hours before the CPAC meeting on a Thursday night. The CPAC voted to appeal, and they were not given correct and clear instructions on how to submit the appeal. So that's why the appeal only covers a couple of points. It doesn't cover the SEQA issues. It doesn't cover a lot of details. When they asked county staff if they could amend it, change it, fix it up, get it right, basically they didn't get any answer. So here I was, down here at the county offices at 4:00 on the final day to appeal, and your staff were helpful to advise me that I didn't need to bother. It was all taken care of by the CPAC appeal, but since they couldn't change their appeal to designate the SEQA issues, it wasn't taken care of. So that's why I had to appeal. So I really beg you to consider that there are lots of problems that need to be addressed by a higher authority that has responsibility and is accountable to the electorate. And I would really feel that there has, there being no other way, this appeal should be not at a cost to the appellant who represents the public. And thirdly, a review of the cost of appeals in many counties in Northern California reveals that Sacramento County's fee is much, 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 much higher than our neighbors'. And that seems like another reason it should be waived. Do you have any questions about?
What? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Serna?
I had a question, but it's not for Ms. Linderman, it's for staff, but it's relative to some of the points.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Linderman? Okay, thank you, you can be seated.
Thanks. So I guess I want to understand, for any party that chooses to pursue an appeal similar to this, at what point in the process of pursuing that appeal are they provided explicit information about the costs? The point at which appeal feels, appeal fees are perhaps nonrefundable, if that's the right terminology? In other words, I want to know, did the party that has just appeared before us that's requesting the fee be waived, when and how did they become aware of what it means to pursue the appeal and at what cost?
I'll answer that to the best of my ability. I'm not sure I know every point at which staff interacted with Ms. Linderman, but there is a point that I can clarify with regard to how the CPAC appeal went versus her individual appeal. It is true that I was advised, and I advised county council Krista Whitman, that with regard to the CPAC vote, the vote had been approval. So it was staff's initial opinion that the CPAC could not appeal because they had recommended approval of the project. And as we led into the hearing, and as we looked into it more, I realized that while their recommendation was for approval, their conditions were actually sort of denial. So I reached out to Krista, we had a conversation, and we concluded that it was better and safer route to allow, to advise the CPAC that they could appeal, and they did choose to appeal. Going back and forth at the same time, it was my understanding that Ms. Linderman was interacting with some of my staff, she wasn't necessarily interacting directly with me, and asking questions about the appeal, and I believe both we and the clerk were providing information about how to appeal. She specifically wanted to use a provision of the zoning code, which is this provision that if an EIR is not prepared, that the appeal goes to the Board of Supervisors rather than to the Planning Commission sitting as the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so there, I had not had any experience, nor had any of the current planning staff had experience in using that provision of the zoning code. Typically, most people appeal the project, which in this case would have gone to the BZA, rather than appealing because an EIR was not prepared, in which case that was a completely different provision that went to the board.
Does, the fact that an EIR was not prepared, and perhaps it's difference of opinion between the appellant and staff as to whether there even needs to be an EIR versus an egg deck in this situation, does that really constitute a quote-unquote "error"? Because my understanding about fee waivers is that they are, it's one thing to consider a fee waiver request if there is a well-documented error, it's another when there's kind of a difference of opinion.
Right. In cases of very clear staff error, we actually have a different process which can be done administratively to approve a fee waiver, and that's done at the CEO's office level. In this case, we could not conclude that there was an error, and therefore it is the sentence that I read to you from the zoning code that would prevail, and it's the board's discretion which does say that you should look to whether there's an error or other special circumstance.
And so everything that you've explained and disclosed in terms of there being perhaps, I don't know how to describe it, but maybe a misunderstanding at some point about what the CPAC action was that may or may not constitute your ability to appeal, was, is that considered an error or is that?
I mean, because we allowed them to appeal and they did appeal, I think we acted conservatively and gave them their right to appeal, which they have done, which has led to this, in part, this hearing today. So I don't see that there was an error there, especially since the outcome was allowing them to.
Okay, so besides phone conversations and meetings and, you know, the ability to catch someone in the hallway, to explain, hey, what does it mean to appeal and what does it cost me if I want to pursue that, where can any member of the public go to, you know, read for themselves what our appeal process and policy is and how much it costs?
Right. Our staff will be happy to answer that question. If people call us, if they email us, if they ask us at the CPAC meeting, we inform them.
Can I go across the breezeway right now in the planning department and find a policy in writing that explains what it costs and what it means to appeal?
Well, you actually appeal through the clerk's office, so we would, we would tell people what we know and we would send them to the clerk, and then the clerk would tell them exactly how to appeal.
Okay.
And that is what I believe happened in this circumstance.
All right, thank you.
The county council want to weigh in?
I want to weigh in a little bit. I've been fairly heavily involved in this since August, so I agree with staff that there was no error. The only thing that was a little bit confusing in the beginning was whether the CPAC had a right to appeal, but as LeAnn has said, we err on the conservative side and allowed them to appeal. My memory is that at the time, I got a call when Ms. Linderman was at the counter and wanted to fire, file her appeal, and the CPAC had already appealed, and my advice was, just don't need to appeal, don't spend the $3,900, there's already been an appeal filed that's de novo and all the issues will already be considered, but she wanted to appeal in any event.
There's been some confusion by folks that I've met with as recently as yesterday about what the term "de novo" means. Could you explain that?
Yeah. A de novo hearing means that as long as an appeal has been filed, the board can consider everything. So you can look at all the conditions, you can look at the project as a whole, and you're not limited to what's on the appeal form. It's nice to have a, an appeal form that explains exactly what the issues are, but as long as the appeal is timely filed, the board has an ability to look at the entire project.
And that applies to our discretion regardless if it's a CPAC appealing or a member of the public?
Exactly the same. The only thing that, it was a little weird here is we didn't even honestly realize there was a provision in the zoning code, or I don't think anyone ever had ever looked at it that elevated it to the board, and we're actually going to take a look at that at the next zoning code update and try to clean that language up. It actually comes from, it's been in there since like 1971, but that was the only thing that made it different with Ms. Linderman's appeal because she did use that language in the zoning code and elevate it to the board. Otherwise, the appeal of the CPAC and the appeal of Ms. Linderman would have been identical. She just bumped it to the board, but either hearing would have been de novo.
And in our staff, including you, Krista had, went out of your way to try to explain as best you could to?
I haven't talked to her directly, but I've certainly talked to everybody else in the county about it. And yes, we did, we were meeting with her actually outside the board offices, the clerk of the board, when she filed the appeal and went through it, and she filed in a timely manner.
But it was clearly explained that at that point that she did not have to encumber her own personal bank account to do this?
It was, that was explained, but it was my understanding at the time that she clearly wanted it in front of the board rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the Planning Commission, and so she wanted to file as an individual so that the, under the SEQA provision, so that the item was in front of the board.
But, so, I mean, I just want to make sure I understand. So if the CPAC action was appealable and was moving forward, that would have, that appeal would have landed where? Here?
No, the CPAC appealed on the basis of the project, not on the basis that an EIR was not prepared.
Right, so, so in other words, there is, there is a subtle difference here.
Yes.
Between the two appeals, right?
Yes.
One lands in our, in front of us, one does not.
Yes.
So perhaps she was making a decision at that point that she'd rather, even though the CPAC was appealing, she wanted appeals because she wanted to get this in front of a different body?
She did. She expressed that, yes.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure I understand.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I have a question for Krista, based upon what LeAnn said, that irrespective of an error, obviously if an error is made, then It actually comes from, it's been in there since like 1971, but that was the only thing that made it different with Ms. Linderman's appeal, because she did use that language in the zoning code and elevate it to the board. Otherwise, the appeal of the CPAC and the appeal of Ms. Linderman would have been identical. She just bumped it to the board, but either hearing would have been de novo.
And in our staff, including you, Krista had, went out of your way to try to explain as best you could to?
I haven't talked to her directly, but I've certainly talked to everybody else in the county about it. And yes, we did, we were meeting with her actually outside the board offices, the clerk of the board, when she filed the appeal and went through it, and she files in a timely manner.
But it was clearly explained that, at that point, that she did not have to encumber her own personal bank account to do this?
It was, that was explained, but it was my understanding at the time that she clearly wanted it in front of the board, rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the Planning Commission, and so she wanted to file as an individual, so that, under the SEQA provision, so that the item was in front of the board.
But, so, I mean, I just want to make sure I understand. So if the CPAC action was appealable and was moving forward, that would have, that appeal would have landed where? Here?
No, the CPAC appealed on the basis of the project, not on the basis that an EIR was not prepared.
Right. So, in other words, there is a subtle difference here between the two appeals, right?
Yes.
One lands in our, in front of us, one does not.
Yes.
So perhaps she was making a decision at that point that she'd rather, even though the CPAC was appealing, she wanted appeals because she wanted to get this in front of a different body?
She did, she expressed that, yes.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure I understand.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I have a question for Krista, based upon what LeAnn said, that irrespective of an error, obviously if an error is made, and there's provisions even at the administrative level to grant the fee waiver, grant the appeal. But that, there is latitude with this board, based upon either what we hear or what we've derived from the documents, to make a decision irrespective of an error, if we think there's sufficient confusion and/or disconnect, and/or, everything has been laid out here, and we've received, you know, volumes of written information, some of obviously going to the matter that we're going to be hearing in a moment, but, so we have the discretion, correct?
Right. The zoning code says that, so as you indicated, if it was clear error, it wouldn't even come to the board.
Right.
Once it gets to the board, the board can grant a fee waiver because there's error or for special circumstances. Typically, I think I'm, typically the board only grants in the event of error, but it is within the discretion of the board.
Okay. So again, so if the circumstances, if we, you know, in our own summation of this, and we come to that conclusion, either individually or collectively, then we have the ability to do that here today? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We have several requests from the public to speak. Sean Dillon, and Carl Doak, and Michael Seaman are the first three.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Sean Dillon, committee advocate for the Arden Arcade area. So as we heard, the planning process, especially appeals, is a confusing, convoluted process. It is for applicants, for staff, for members of the public, for Ms. Linderman. So now we have a situation where we're here today, we have a senior saying on a fixed income, spending $4,000 to ensure that the voice of the community has a chance just to be heard. So I was looking at the agenda item, and in the staff discussion, there was an interesting line, and it is additionally, because a separate appeal has been filed by the CPAC, and the two appeals have been consolidated before the board, Ms. Linderman could withdraw her appeal, and the project will still be considered by the board in its entirety based on the CPAC appeal. So looking at that, what cost did the county incur because of Ms. Linderman's appeal? If all the works are already being done because of the CPAC appeal, all the processing, all the noticing, because now is one hearing, what additional cost has been incurred? The fee is to help recue those costs. The CPAC appeal is paid out of the general fund already. So on this, it's almost like a case of double dipping, where we're trying to compensate the CPAC appeal and pay for that with Ms. Linderman's fee. For me, I think it's a, it's a simple decision, we need to just kind of do the right thing and just say, hey, Ms. Linderman stood up for the community, it was a confusing process, even staff has admitted that it was a little bit confusing, and they haven't been familiarized with the sections. Let's not penalize her, let's approve the fee waiver, and then move on with the appeal itself. Thank you.
Carl Doak?
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Carl Doak, a resident of Doyle House of Manor. I had the pleasure to watch Julie Linderman about three years ago in front of a CPAC meeting. She's very well spoken, she speaks with a lot of respect, she dozes her stuff, she's an asset to our community. I can shed some light on what transpired. On Thursday, on the CPAC meeting, there was a great deal of confusion, Manny tried to clarify some of that. On Friday, Chairman Little sent a member of CPAC to the county to file an appeal. On Monday, after some thought, Mr. Little wanted to add more to the appeal, but he was stymied when he was here. Julie, in essence, is acting as a proxy for those who could not get the appeal through the CPAC, through Mr. Chairman Little's. I respectfully ask you to please grant her appeal, and thank you.
Thank you. Michael Seaman?
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Seaman. I live on Merriwood Drive in Arden Arcade. I believe you've all received an email from me and my wife requesting the, granting the waiver. The $4,000 that's charged to Ms. Linderman has absolutely no public purpose to be served as an exorbitant and unreasonable fee, absolutely no public purpose. The only justification for such a high fee is to stymie the public concerns that were raised during the review process, and that sends a very chilling message to the public about how their municipal government feels about their constituents. Other local jurisdictions in Northern California charge far, far less. It would be understandable if you had a de minimis level, but $4,000 is not de minimis. It's essentially equivalent to four and a half months' rent, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, of the average rent in Arden Arcade for 2012 to 2016. That's, that's just, that's just really, 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 really wrong. And so what I'd really like the Supervisors to do is to change your fee structure, for one thing, and start right now by being fair to Ms. Linderman. She's done the community a service, she's also done the taxpayers of the county a service, because I think you've all seen a letter that you're going to get in the next item about how the decision that's been reached so far has provided grave risk for the county in terms of SEQA lawsuit. So by pointing out those items, bringing them to your attention, as elected officials who represent all of Sacramento County, she's really done everybody a service. She's helped the community, staff had to bring the item to you anyway, and the fee level is unduly high. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Doug Bayless. Did you mean to speak on this item or the next one, Mr. Bayless?
On the, on the shopping center itself, not on the...
Okay, so that's 36 then?
Thank you.
Okay. Lenny Forrester and Karen Klinger. Ms. Forrester, you have two requests to speak in, one for 35, one for 36, but your comments on the bottom kind of refer to item 35, so I'm not sure, did you want to speak on both items?
Yes, I do. I apologize for that.
Okay.
I wanted to hone in a little bit further on the concept that someone mentioned earlier about...
And if you'd introduce yourself.
I'm Lenny Forrester, I live in Arden Park.
Thank you.
And I wanted to hone in a little bit further, just for a second, on the concept of what someone else brought up earlier, it's a legal concept actually called double dipping. And what that means is when a government entity, such as the county, charges twice for the same thing. And given that the county chose to combine the two appeals into one to be heard de novo, there's only one appeal here that needs to be paid for. And if the CPAC appeal is being paid for by county taxpayers, which I believe it is, then to charge Julie Linderman another near $4,000 would be called double dipping in legal terms. And obviously, the law doesn't think that's right, and I hope that you don't too. I am fairly new to this kind of thing, and so when I saw that the appeal fee was as high as it was, I have to say that I was absolutely stunned. And I've only been, back in the Sacramento area, I grew up here, but I've only been back here for a couple of years. Prior to that, I was living in Sausalito. And I was unable unfortunately to get the Marin County fees, although I did make a lot of effort to do that. I reached out to a number of counties in Northern California to figure out how high their fees were compared to our Sacramento fees. And the, I didn't reach out to every county, it took quite a few hours to do this, from calling planning, the heads of planning departments, and looking at fee schedules online, and sorting through websites. But what I did find suggests that Sacramento may want to reconsider their fee structure. And for today, I strongly urge you, based on the information I'm about to present, to grant Julie Linderman's fee waiver. The examples that I found was Contra Costa County, they charge $125 to appeal directly to the Board of Supervisors, that's 31 times more than what Sacramento County charges. I mean, 31 times less, excuse me. Alameda County charges $250, that means that Sacramento County charges 15 times what Alameda County does, to appeal directly to the Board of Supervisors. Napa County is at 416, that's nine times more than what Sacramento County charges to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. San Francisco County is at 597, that's six times what Sacramento County charges. And Yolo County charges $941, and that's four times less than what Sacramento County charges. I apologize if I was confusing them more and less there, but I think you got my point that all of these counties charge much, much, much less than what Julie Linderman was charged to appeal.
Could you make your final comments, please?
My final comment is that I urge you all to waive Julie Linderman's fee, and I further urge you to analyze your, your fee structure, so that everyone in Sacramento County has an easy way to be able to exert their right to the First Amendment and redress grievances in front of you.
Thank you very much. Finally, Karen Klinger?
I'm doing 36. As am I. Are we, are we, we're on number 36?
No, we're on number 35, and Ms. Klinger, you meant, your card says 35 and 36. But you don't have to speak to this if you don't want to.
Oh, I love speaking to you.
I know you do.
I can hardly wait to see your lovely faces.
I know.
I do want to make sure, though, that I speak in favor of the fee waiver to be returned to the applicant, Julie Linderman, for the sole purpose that you're our elected officials. And we do need to have a dialogue, and the only way we can get to you is obviously to pay a huge fee, which to me seems like extortion. And it also seems like it's intimidation, and it's almost a sign of discrimination, because special interests can get to you at no cost, business owners, we, the neighborhood, have to pay in order to see our elected officials or speak before you, or fit it in to some kind of an agenda item, which is difficult when you want the community to be heard before you are elected officials. So I would highly request that you return this fee, and go to something, if you have to, to something much less, like $400 to $500 would be kind of a minimal in-between the costs that other counties charge. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last request I have on this item.
Renee's got a lady entry.
Except for one approaching. Matt Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Matt Gray, and esteemed Supervisors. I am a registered lobbyist, but I'm not here representing a client. On this issue, I won't repeat anything that's previously been said, however, I do believe, since I work on First Amendment issues predominantly, that the $4,000 fee is a bit of an impediment if we want to encourage people to speak and redress government for any grievances. I'm sure that counsel has reviewed the matter, however, I think entirely that a reimbursement of the fee is entirely appropriate, given the interests of the neighborhood, the types of discussions we've tried to have and were obstructed, not by this board, but by the parties who were involved. Obviously, changes have been made so far because of the input that's been given by the neighborhood, so the changes were appropriate. It was appropriate that the process was slowed down, that the changes were made, and that more eyes were on the application for the development. So it's a good thing. And unfortunately, a resident had come up with a substantial sum of money in order to get to this point, but I do hope that the board sees fit to reimburse the funds so we can continue with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Question for counsel. So how unusual is it to have this situation where you have, hopefully I get this correct, you have an appeal that's initiated by one of our advisory bodies, you have an appeal by a member of the public, they're both de novo, and the only difference I could, I could think of at this point, based on some responses earlier from LeAnn, is that there's only a difference in the governing, the bodies that the appeal appears before, so how...
So I've been sitting with the board on land use matters since 2003, and I've never seen this come up before.
So fairly unique.
And I don't think planning has ever seen it happen before.
So if I could...
Yeah, we've never had two appeals on the same matter.
And we don't have any standing policy that advises any member of the public that in the case that there is an appeal made by a CPAC, here's what it, here's what it means in terms of your decision point to file a separate appeal, even if it's de novo? We don't have anything that's...
We don't have a written, we don't have a written policy, but I believe Ms. Linderman was advised that an appeal had been filed, that would be in a de novo, and there was no reason...
There's a lot of moving parts to that.
But that there was no reason to file, in my view, there was no reason to file a second appeal unless it was really important to her to be at the board rather than the BZA.
I think the other, there is a more deeper subtle issue here of where this sort of initially went wrong. The way the process is set up, if the item is controversial, typically we would expect the CPAC to vote no. That would automatically elevate the item out of the zoning administrator into the Planning Commission, where then any appeals would be from the Planning Commission to the board.
Right.
And we are looking at this, and how, what happens when CPACs vote approval versus denial, and what their appeal rights are. So this is something we may be approaching the board in the future as a separate item about.
I feel like we're learning a lot.
Yeah. But where I think this project sort of got on an awkward track was when the CPAC seemed to have voted approval, but when you really delved into what their approval was and their condition, they didn't really mean approval. They actually, their recommendations were actually sort of denial of major components of the project. So if they had actually voted denial, then the project would have been heard at the Planning Commission, and the appeal from both the CPAC and an individual would have both been from the Planning Commission to the board. So that's sort of the underlying, I think, the crux of where things got off track here.
And one last thing, the, these two, the two actions in front of us, or questions in front of us, whether to move forward with the appeal is completely separate, is it not, from whether or not we waive the appeal fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for those questions. Since this came up last summer, I've had numerous conversations with Planning Department about how this came about and the corrective actions, I think, that will make it easier for everyone to understand what was going on, including training of CPAC members.
Can I go to one of those trainings too?
All right. Are there any comments or questions on this item before us? Mr. Kennedy?
Not specifically on the item, but...
Oh, here I go.
Thank you. Yeah, just, Mr. Gill, when was the last time we visited our fees and all that? I mean, I would assume that we do a check-in now and then to see how we're comparing to other jurisdictions and that type of thing.
Some fees are looked at annually, some are bi-annual. I can't recall last time we looked at these fees, but we'll, we'll go back and look at them when the last review was done.
It's been about two years, and we actually do have another fee review underway right now that we've been trying to move forward. There's been a few hiccups and little things in the process, but we are trying to move that forward for CEO office review, and then onto the board.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Frost?
There was a comment relating to, there's a fee that's being charged twice for work that was only done once. Is that the case, or did an extra appeal require the work, twice as much work?
I don't, I'll let others weigh in, I don't think it's a double dipping, in my opinion.
Perhaps County Council could shed some light on that.
I can weigh in. First of all, I don't think double dipping is really a legal concept, but did we charge twice for the same work? Well, no, because first of all, we didn't charge the CPAC for their appeal, because under the zoning code provisions, they had a right to an appeal, a free appeal already. Also, I would say that this, the Linderman appeal and fee waiver request has consumed a significant amount of staff time, so I don't think...
a significant amount of staff time, so I don't think it's that the county didn't do the work or that didn't cause additional work. I mean, I, obviously, I don't track by the hour, but I personally have spent quite a bit of time on this, and I know that staff and members of the board have as well. So it's not like it didn't cost extra to have two. But in any event, I don't think we're charging twice. In fact, we're only charging once.
And when we have people come forward to appeal, in those situations, are they provided something in writing that states that there are costs associated with this, that they sign acknowledging that they're aware of that? Seems like we keep coming back to, to that.
So there's a fee, right? When they go to the clerk's office to file an appeal, they're told what the fee is. Before they file, hand over the appeal form and their check, they're told how much it costs.
And the basis for the fee is, is an average time of what it takes to appeal things. In the case of the CPAC, the board has concluded that if the CPAC appeals on a basis of community-wide interest, that that will come out of essentially general fund taxpayer money.
Yeah, in that sense.
And so she knew that, she knew that the CPAC was getting theirs for free, but that she was gonna pay?
Yes.
Have to pay?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, I just, on the broader point about the fees, again, we've had this discussion many times over the years, and I'll just say I don't believe that the appeal fees, they shouldn't just be a real low threshold, because there is work involved, but I don't believe that we should be double, triple, 30 times other jurisdictions. They may do their business differently, and I respect that, but I would just say that, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Gill a number of times over the years about some of the fee schedules, and this is one where I think, again, there needs to be structure, there needs to be understanding, because there are costs associated on the part of the county, but certainly by the party who may be actually making the application. So I get that, but I think having a fee at $4,000 in order to get an item before this board to have it properly heard, irrespective of who the party may be, that that's excessive, and it's based upon, obviously, time and materials and some estimate, but I, and I just, I feel pretty strongly about that, and I know, we've had the conversation, there's been differences by board members about that. It doesn't pertain to matters immediately before us, but I think it needs a really strong look. And again, as we talk about, I'm gonna use this as a good example, and we've had a couple in the last few months where folks have, you know, put $4,000 on the line or something approaching that to get it to the Board of Supervisors, and I think that becomes inhibitive, if not prohibitive, to a lot of folks, so that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Serna?
We have people kind of lined up, kind of-
Well, Mr. Gray, we've already heard from you.
Doesn't matter clarification, but if the board won't entertain it-
I think we've heard from you. Yeah, the board is deliberating now.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. And then I was gonna ask County Counsel, does Ms. Linderman get an automatic rebuttal on this? I, I know she, she had the first comment, does she get the last word?
You certainly can give her that opportunity if you would like to.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's really important-
Stand between the two. Yeah, there you go.
I feel like they're coming at me. I think it's really important, and I really appreciate your offering me the opportunity to give it a little summation here. First of all, the characterization of my motivation, it was never known to you, it is only surmised. It was never known to you, that is what you surmised. I did not want to move this to the Board of Supervisors, per se. You did, in fact, tell me that the CPAC could only appeal on the two issues that they had as conditions in their report. There is a defect, or I believe there's a defect, and that'll be discussed in the hearing, in the SEQA compliance for this project. And you did tell me that the CPAC could not appeal the decision, the zoning administrator's decision, on a SEQA issue, because that wasn't what they were asked to deliberate about. So I don't know that I deliberately picked no EIR, and I wrote that, I scribbled that on that piece of paper. I didn't know that that was going to be characterized as the only reason there should be an appeal. There were no instructions provided on the content and the matters. There were several communications with the clerk of the board's office to find if there are instructions, if there are certain things that have to be stated. I didn't even, I was never even asked to present a statement to accompany my appeal. I did that voluntarily. So ladies and gentlemen, this appeal was made on behalf and in the interest of many neighbors, not just so I could be heard before the Board of Supervisors, but because there is an issue with that project that we feel needs to be presented to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Can I, can I, may I ask a question?
Ms. Serna?
So I hear you. I'm trying to understand, at one point, we've been told that it was explained to you that the CPAC is appealing, you don't need to appeal. You don't need to incur the cost of the appeal.
That's correct.
So I'm trying to understand why you decided to move forward anyway with an appeal.
Because I was told that the CPAC could not address the SEQA issues. They could only appeal the decision. The de novo characterization of the actual hearing of the appeal was not, never made known to me. There's nothing, I don't know that any of you have any writing correspondence or taped recordings telling me that, oh, yeah, they can address all the issues. So I'm, I think there's, you know, we have, I'm old enough that I can claim to not have a good memory from August, but all of us have sometimes foggy memories. So I would like to be, make it perfectly clear. I was told that the CPAC was gonna be allowed to appeal, and actually, they had come in, I knew they came in, to write it up on the little green piece of paper after they had been told they had to come in and write it up on some other paper. I had the paper at the CPAC meeting, but anyway.
Did staff say that the CPAC is appealing, you don't need to appeal, the CPAC appeals a de novo appeal?
They did not say that. They said, "The CPAC has already filed an appeal." The CPAC can only appeal based on the two issues that they scribbled on the little green paper, and that they addressed at the CPAC meeting. Since the defect was not one of those things they scribbled on the paper, and was not one of those things that they were even asked to address at a CPAC meeting, the SEQA issue could not be appealed by the CPAC. That's what I was told.
Okay.
That's what I understood. So I didn't do this as a extra goose to get this before the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Frost?
Mrs. Linderman, I wanted to ask you, but you said that you did not, you felt that you did not file the appeal just because of the SEQA.
No, I'd actually, and if you look at my hand scratching on there, it does say there are other issues. So when I was in there scratching out my little document-
But what were those issues?
They're the same issues that the CPAC was appealing, and that was the generosity of the department in gifting this developer special development permits, changes in the legal interpretation of the zoning code requirement of a masonry wall. There's a variety of things.
Thank you.
And as-
Did I just, excuse me, did I just hear you correctly, though? You said the same things as what the CPAC was appealing?
In addition to the SEQA deficiency.
I thought I heard the same things that the CPAC is appealing.
In addition to the SEQA.
Okay.
So you filed the SEQA in addition to what the CPAC was doing in hopes of having an even more powerful case against the project?
There are defects, and we have provided significant testimony to believe there are defects in the SEQA compliance in this project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any final comments from board members? Well, I think this has been a very confusing issue for Ms., Mrs. Linderman, and what my suggestion is, is that I'm going to move for denial of the waiver, but I'm gonna pay half of her fee. I'll split it with you. And I'll pay out of my district fund, so I think that's fair, and it keeps the denial in place. That's my motion.
That's generous. I'll second.
Madam Chair, I want to just speak to the motion. Appreciate your creativity and generosity, but I've come to the conclusion that I think because of the confusion that's been spoken to here, that, and it shouldn't necessarily come out of your neighborhood funds or out of that source, that's entirely up to you, but I do believe we should waive the entirety of the fee, so.
Mr. Kennedy?
You threw a wrench at it, didn't you?
Sorry.
I, yeah. No, I actually, I think, usually, as you know up here, loathe waiving fees because we charge them, because it's actually what the county incurs. I think there is enough question here, though, as far as the explanation that was given to the applicant, the appellant. There was enough confusion that it was not understood the de novo nature and what could be appealed and what couldn't be appealed, that really makes me uncomfortable, so I'm not going to support the waiver. I am going to support the waiver.
Ms. Serna?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say, there was, we had a speaker that made mention of the fact that, I think she generally stated that the board, or maybe some on the board aren't willing to listen to the public in a context like this, and I could say that's not true for me. I took a meeting with Ms. Linderman and Ms. Frost yesterday, so I wanted to understand their side of the story, certainly. And I would agree that, and it has everything to do with my line of questioning earlier about the uniqueness of this situation and why I think it makes me even more uncomfortable supporting continuance with the application of the fee, given the fact that even our own County Counsel and planning staff can't recall a time when an instance like this has ever been in front of the board. And I think when we have a situation like this, it really bears the kind of questioning that we've all applied to this, trying to hear from both the appellant and from staff to get to the bottom of it. And for me, there are just too many places where there's a deviation from kind of a normal process, or a process that was well explained, or a process that was or wasn't in writing, or, you know, who did, who did you happen to hear for, hear from at the county on Tuesday versus who you heard from on Friday? So, yeah, I too am not gonna be able to support the motion, because I think this is probably somewhat of a textbook example of when we ought to reconsider, reconsider a fee.
Ms. Frost?
I do support upholding staff's recommendation, and the reason is, you know, these appeals not only require process and, and work for everyone, but they, the plans that, that people have, that they're trying to move forward, the developers or the community, everything stops, because nothing can move forward until we work through this. And so it's costing more, more money than, than what one might imagine, and it's, it's not something to be taken lightly, it's not something that should be done just irresponsibly because it's costing people money. I respect that you had issues, and from what I can see, the staff did not make any mistakes. There was confusion, and I think it was generous of Supervisor Peters to, to offer to help pay part of it. So I'm still gonna support staff's recommendation, but it looks like we're moving in another direction with another-
I think the thing that pushes me over into supporting the staff recommendation is that Ms. Linderman stated several times that she understood she didn't need to make the appeal because the CPAC was appealing it, so it became extraneous in that sense. Ms. Serna?
Yeah, thank you. So in light of how I think we are gonna best handle this in terms of action, I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we waive the fee.
Second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Frost voting no.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 36 is the Arden Creek Town Center Project Appeal of the Zoning Administrator's Approval of the Use Permit, Special Development Permit, and Design Review for a property located at the northeast corner of Watt Avenue and Arden Way intersection in the Arden Arcade Community. The, I don't have an environmental document noted here.
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
I don't have an environmental document noted here.
Okay, thank you.
It's a negative declaration.
And just, before you start, if I understand the, the sub-agenda here, Ms. Linderman, since you won your appeal, you will have a little longer to speak when you come up to speak. So I just wanted to let you know so you can be thinking about what you want to say. Okay.
All right. I do have a PowerPoint, and we did think a little bit about the order of actions, so I will give the staff presentation. We will then have remarks from the appellant, which normally would be the CPAC, but unless someone has arrived since we were last informed, we may be skipping that. We will then have Ms. Linderman as the appellant. Sounds like you're gonna give her some extra time. We would then have the applicant. That's my understanding, that Greg Thatch will be speaking on behalf of the applicant. Your board would then take public testimony, and then we would again have the appellant come back up, and then board deliberations. So that's the typical process that we would follow. All right. So we're now on to the, to the project itself. The board, as you discussed previously, is hearing this de novo, so the entirety of the project is before you. The site is at the northeast corner of Watt Avenue and Arden Way in the Arden Arcade Community. It is zoned SC Shopping Center. The crest has to do with upgrading an existing shopping center. They're requesting a use permit, having to do with setbacks of a drive-through lane, a special development permit related to signs, and a location of a trash enclosure along with non-discretionary design review. The item was approved at the zoning administrator at the hearing of August 16, 2017, and as we have discussed, there are two consolidated appeals, one by the CPAC and one by Ms. Linderman. This is the site plan here. There is a bank of existing shopping centers. How to get that to work. On the right-hand side, the eastern side, are the big shops A that exist, and the proposed additions are a new shop B. There are the building pad at the bottom of the map, 4,800 square foot pad for a drive-through, beverage, food service, retail and service commercial, so that shop B at the bottom has the drive-through lane along Watt Avenue there. The shop C is the northerly of the two shops. It's a 5,000 square foot pad for restaurants, retail, and service commercial. And initially, when this came in, there was a drive-through associated with it as well that would have been up against that residential. That was very controversial, and through the process, that drive-through was dropped. The applicant is requesting three new monument signs. They're shown where the red arrows are in the map. They would be replacing two existing monument signs. The applicant would be redoing the frontage along Watt Avenue. They will eliminate two of the five, five existing driveways on Watt, so that will be a benefit in terms of turning movements and pedestrian orientation by having the elimination of those drive-throughs, and they'll be consolidating that into one main entry in the middle. They did need to leave the, a southern entry there, because it was also associated with the bank property that is not part of this project and not part of the ownership. They will be also constructing a new masonry wall on the north and east boundaries, and they will be upgrading parking lot landscaping and lighting. So these are some photos of the existing project. So these are some photos of the existing project site. As you can see, it certainly does not meet current standards for lighting or particularly landscaping. Definitely one of our older centers and built long before our current development standards, and definitely in need of upgrading and improvements. There is also a variety of existing walls along the adjacent property boundaries to the north and east. This is somewhat similar to some other circumstances that this board has debated, Rosemont Shopping Center being the one that has come to my mind that you spent many a hearing on. And so there are many wood, there's some combination wood and masonry. I think there's just a whole mishmash behind the shopping center of different kinds of fences. And one of the complications, I'm going to talk about in a minute on a different slide, has to do with going back and retrofitting these existing shopping centers. What happens with the utilities and the existing mature landscaping in the neighbor's backyard? So that can become a big issue. So one of the entitlements is a use permit. They are requesting to reduce the front landscaping for the shop B, that's the one towards the bottom, from 25 feet to 10 feet, which the zoning code does allow through a consideration of a discretionary entitlement. And this is where I think we have a little bit of a mismatch between our design guidelines and our older zoning code standards. The zoning code standards would call for the drive-through to be 50 feet set back. We do have some design guidelines that would say, for example, shopping centers should define public street frontage with building edges and storefronts. Buildings should be sited and designed to reinforce the pedestrian experience. So essentially, the design guidelines are kind of encouraging a more urban aesthetic with the buildings pushed out to the street edge a little bit, where the standards still have the bigger 50-foot standard. And so it's through this discretionary entitlement process that we look at whether the site is right, and how it should be done, and whether it works to push the building out to the street edge. And in this case, the staff conclusion was that that was appropriate and a better design. It does put the drive-through lane closer to Watt Avenue, and it aligns shops B and C along Watt. So you can see in this graphic how the northerly shop and the southerly shop will now be in a single alignment, even though the southerly shop will have the drive-through. Along with that comes the trash enclosure. And in order to keep that out of the main parking lot, it also moves closer to the edge of the street to be more associated with the buildings and out of the main parking lot. And I already talked about shop B. Also, there with regard to the signs, they are requesting three monument signs. They're going from 12 feet high to 15 feet high for Monument Sign One, and from 100 square feet to 113 square feet. Monument Sign Two goes from 10 feet to 12 feet, and from two-foot to one-foot wide planter on the east side. And Monument Sign Three goes from 12 feet to 15 feet, and from 100 square feet to 113 square feet. And we have looked at other similar large shopping centers in the area. In the zoning administrator staff report, there's a full-page table that compares each of, compares this site with the How About Arden site and the Country Club Center site, and it compares height, square footage, and setbacks, focusing solely on height for some of my notes. I will note that How About Arden did get approval for a 37 and 1/2-foot sign. It's a pretty tall sign. It's a very large commercial center. Country Club was approved at 18 feet, and this project is at 15 feet. They initially, I think, had requested higher, and staff pushed them down a little bit lower. With regard to the landscape plan, they will be installing all-new landscaping with drought-tolerant plant species, street trees. The wall, I'll talk about that on a separate slide. They're going to have essentially a consolidated entry off of Watt Avenue with an enhanced entry with a landscape medium and pavers. So it will pretty much dramatically change the entrance to the shopping center. There will now be shading, which for the most part does not exist, and enhanced pedestrian paths of travel that will be of great benefit. With regard to the wall, we, as indicated, we did do a negative declaration, and part of that included a noise study, which in part was focused also on the initial proposal for a drive-through on that northern shop. We concluded through the noise study that there was no mitigation that was needed that triggered a sound wall, but we do have a development standard that requires a masonry wall. And so, similar to the discussion with Rosemont, this is a standard that we have been allowing various shopping centers to use, which is this more of a product on the left that has the precast concrete wall with these periodic footing sets, rather than the exhibit on the right that would require you to do a concrete masonry wall where you have to completely dig footings. In that case, you're pretty much digging into lots of existing utilities and landscaping. And so we have concluded that the design on the left is consistent with our zoning code and design guidelines, and this is not the only location throughout the county where we have used this as the model.
Just to be clear, if I could, Madam Chair, but you didn't use the type of wall that's shown on the left in Rosemont. It was, we ended up with a different.
It was a different wall, but it was the same.
It wasn't precast. They built it in place. It was, and it had to do more of a wood framing with double-sided, and it was quite a substantial wall. I mean, because we went through all those hearings, but they did not do a precast.
It wasn't precast, but it was the footings weren't the.
Yes. It was post versus an entire footing that ran the course, yes.
Yeah. With regard to the design review for shops B, they are 4,855 square feet, single-story. It's consistent with the scheme approved in the Phase 1 Design Review, the renovation of the existing buildings. It would allow a drive-through beverage service with a lane paralleling Watt Avenue. And the drive-through business is limited to 2,000 square feet within this building. So there is a maximum limit in the project and on the site plan that would not allow that component of the business to grow. The exhibit here for design review of shops C, that's the northerly one, 5,000 square foot building, single-story, with a small outdoor patio. So we have touched upon the appeals a bit. The CPAC appeal was filed on August 25 on the basis that the project was approved without the CPAC's two recommended conditions. These are those two conditions: that all signs shall be in conformance with the Arden Arcade Community Special Sign District, and that a special development permit shall not be granted for any deviation from the sign standard, and that the precast concrete wall to be constructed along the north and east property lines shall have the same equality and functionality of a concrete masonry CMU wall. So those were the two conditions that the zoning administrator did not apply on the project. And then Ms. Linderman, as she has indicated, filed her appeal on August 28 on the basis that an environmental impact was not prepared, and the zoning administrator's approval was based on a defective negative declaration and the other items in her materials. May not be entirely summarized on this slide. So the CPAC appeal of the zoning administrator should not, would essentially have gone to the Planning Commission sitting as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Because of Ms. Linderman's appeal is based on the lack of an EIR, that has elevated the hearing body to the board. We've mentioned this is de novo, and we consolidated the appeals because it would be inappropriate to send the same item to the Planning Commission and to the board. With regard to our key points recommending project approval, from the staff perspective, this is an outdated existing shopping center, and there is great benefit from the improved landscaping, lighting, pedestrian safety. The uses are permitted in the shopping center zone. The entitlements are really about design and standards. The project is relatively modest in scale and is less than a 10% overall increase to the project. It's a great opportunity to require upgraded landscaping, parking, and amenities, to reduce the number of driveways off of Watt Avenue, to get a new main entry off of Watt, and to create this new consistent and improved perimeter fencing with a precast concrete wall, and that the increase in sign heights are relatively modest and proportional to the large size of the site and are consistent with other similar sign approvals in the Arden Arcade area. With regard to the California Environmental Quality Act, staff has concluded that preparation of a negative declaration was appropriate. The impacts were deemed to be less than significant. The noise study indicated no impact from the original plan for a drive-through from shop C, which was dropped. DOT has reviewed the project traffic generation and determined the project did not meet the county's criteria to acquire a staff traffic study. The applicant consultants also prepared a traffic analysis and determined that the project did not meet the county's criteria to require a traffic study. That concludes my remarks. I did want to note, I have Cindy Share here, who's the project manager, in case there are any more detailed questions that I cannot answer about the project. I have Tim Hawkins, who's our principal planner and the county's environmental coordinator, and we have Matt Darrow with Department of Transportation, should you have any questions that they would benefit from their assistance.
Okay, Ms. Serna?
Yeah, just a question on one of the slides. Back to the pictures on page 5 of your slides that showed the combination wood masonry fence. Could you point out where that is on the property, and was that constructed by a neighboring property owner, or?
I'm being told it's on the north boundary. I don't know where on the north boundary, and I do not know.
Cindy, it was constructed by the property.
It was, okay, apparently it was constructed by the property owner.
Is it six-foot high, then?
It's higher.
It's higher than six-foot? Seven-foot?
I can't measure it.
Okay, I'm just getting some sense, and so, is that?
Excuse me. Cindy, could you come up to a microphone here, please?
Thank you.
Cindy Share, Office of Planning and Environmental Review.
Hi, Cindy. Finish answering the question.
So we don't have the site plan. So it's on the northerly boundary line, about halfway a couple lots down. I don't know if the property owner for that property is here. He did, I believe that was the gentleman that appeared at the zoning administrator hearing, and he constructed the fence. He paid for that. It appears to be, this is just my visual out on the site, probably a one-to-two-foot-high masonry, small, like retaining wall, and then another, I'd say, five to six feet of the wood, to give you some kind of perception there of how high that is.
Okay. And I assume that that concrete, if you do know, was poured in place, then?
I do not know that.
Okay, because I don't know if there's a footing there or not. I guess I'm just trying to, curious, it's hard to tell from the photo whether, for example, K-Rail that has, you know, a foot to it that then comes up. I'm just trying to get some sense about what that was there. But, and then these other pictures are typicals along the?
North and easterly, yeah. Yeah, there's a combination of different types of fencing that, at the time this commercial shopping center was built, I do not think there was the standard to put up. So everybody, as they, over time, have been building their own fences, planning their own landscaping, and so what we have is just a variety of materials, heights, all sorts of things out there.
Just one other question regarding fencing, then, Cindy. In your assessment or the planning staff, obviously, there was, at the zoning administrator hearing, based upon either testimony and/or the applicant's submittal, was a decision made to allow for the prefab? And then we've had some, obviously, pictures, and again, you know, there are other locations through the county where there have been shifting and sagging of some of those, depending upon how they were constructed and so forth. But here was the determination as related to using the prefab? Was it because of landscaping, because of cost, because of other considerations related to property owners, you know, that have their yards adjacent to this? I guess it wasn't clear to me how and why that was arrived at as being the better of the alternative. I saw the exhibit that LeAnn put up there, but I get it, that there's less penetration into the ground, but I'm trying to get some sense about.
Mature landscaping and utilities, existing utilities.
So what we see there in that wood masonry in the corner there, where the gentleman that, or the person that built that wall, went around the power pole?
Mm-hmm. I believe his testimony was he did not want his wall removed, to build any other type of wall, regardless of the type of wall he wants his left alone.
Yeah, no, I get that, but my point was that you can construct around utilities. There are ways to do that.
At that location, he did. We have not done an assessment of the other poles and utilities. There's also, I don't know if it's a water district, there's something in the back corner, back in there. There's other utilities there, but we didn't do an analysis of every single utility, what's underground, what's above ground. These are just visuals of what we could see.
Right, okay. So could you sum up, again, you weren't the ZA at Hurd, you're the planning staff person that was doing the staff report and on preparation for this hearing, but, so why was it concluded that the prefab was preferred either to, beyond cost, I get that, but so was that any easier, you're going to avoid a water line, you've still got to go down a line, you've still got to puncture into the ground and so forth? So I'm trying to get some sense. And you could do a footing that has a back foot to it, depending upon the height and, you know, construct. It doesn't necessarily have to intrude into somebody's yard on the other side, I would think.
So when we looked at this and looked at that option of the prefab, I'll call it the prefab wall, I also talked to the county's landscape architect and the county's design review administrator about other projects, you know, as LeAnn has pointed out, that the county has looked at to try to, how do we deal with mature landscaping? And so I actually did have an extensive conversation with our landscape architect about the impacts of a concrete wall with those trenches, which we tried to describe not too well in that one slide, and that it would probably kill the mature landscaping if somebody went in there entrenched to do a six-foot-high masonry wall, and that the options such as a prefab wall, you can move those footings a little bit. There is a little bit of flexibility, unlike the trenching, which you're just trenching through. So you could move the footings supporting that wall if there was a large tree, if there was a utility pole. So it allows you a little bit more flexibility in how you can construct that fence along that property line.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions right now? Okay, Ms. Linderman, this would be your opportunity to speak.
So thank you again for allowing me to speak. I have to first ask a question.
Okay.
Since there is no CPAC representative here to speak, if I had withdrawn my appeal, would this hearing be canceled?
Go ahead. County Council will respond to that.
We had a similar situation, I think it was last February, where the CPAC filed the appeal, and they failed to send a representative, and on my advice, the board proceeded with the appeal hearing and just took into account that the fact that there was no representative, but we did go ahead and have the hearing. That would have been my advice here as well.
Okay, I was just curious, because I had been informed that if the appellant doesn't appear.
Well, if it's an individual, I think that's, they don't go ahead, but since it was a CPAC, we did.
Okay, so it's the, we have different rules for different folks, so I, okay, but I just needed to understand that, because I felt a great deal of pressure to maintain my appeal, even if you had not offered the waiver. So, thank you. So I'm Julie Linderman, and this is my appeal. First off, just wanted to put up what we're talking about, and this is the renderings by the applicant of their suggested expectations on developing the site. In the lower right-hand corner, there is a, I think, a picture of how it looks now. Next, I want to make sure that you understand, it is not my intent in appealing this approval to halt development, to thwart the potential for quality growth in our neighborhood, to do anything that is against community improvement. And while I have been characterized by some people as having that intent, it really is not that intent. I'm appealing this primarily because this project has been given numerous special considerations and unjustifiable and unjustifiable or necessitated special development permits, not variances, because we don't use that term in Sacramento County, but they've been given a number of permissions that really seem to be favoritism and spot zoning.
But could you describe some of those special considerations?
Yeah. They were actually told they didn't have to apply for a special permit to put in a prefab wall, because the people in the office, the architect in the office said, it's, well, you could call it masonry.
Okay, we'll have someone respond to that. Anything else?
You don't have to, they were given permission to reduce the landscaping near the sidewalk, because they wanted to. They were given permission to move the trash enclosure to butt up against the sidewalk almost, so that the people who are trying to be pedestrians or forced to be pedestrians along Watt Avenue can walk the sidewalk along the garbage dump.
Okay, we'll have someone address that also. Anything else?
Actually, I have a number of things.
Okay. No, I just meant on your exceptions, that's what I was trying to, just on the exceptions, you said that they were given exceptions, so, go ahead.
Well, that's what every special development permit, every use permit is, an exception to complying with the zoning code. Maybe, maybe that's not.
But the special development permit comes before some hearing body, where the public is invited to comment, so that's what is going on right now?
That's why I hear.
Good, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't usually. It goes before the CPAC, it goes before the zoning administrator, it goes before possibly the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission if there's a disagreement. So, anyway, I'd like to get back to, my remarks are that we-
Right, go right ahead.
We want to, we want fair land use and zoning policy with the rules applied equally to all people. The county staff have presented a nice revised report here, and some of the issues that were spoken to, I'd like to also address. This is, in fact, an outdated shopping center, and all of these enhancements are required by code when this shopping center is remodeled and brought to code. The fences across the back have been promised for 10 years, but the acknowledgement to the neighbors that they can only demand that the walls be put in when the develop, when a developer, the landowner, improves the shopping center. The point about the project is relatively modest in scale and is less than 10% increase of the overall building area. That's only because the department allowed a bifurcation of the gross plan for redevelopment of this corner, and authorized, because it was non-discretionary, a remodel of 20-some-thousand square feet added at the end of the right aid, south end of the shopping center, and that area is included in the number 100,256. Prior to that special inclusion and authorization of that project, the shopping center size was more like 76,000 square feet. The opportunity to acquire upgraded landscaping, parking, and amenities is frankly what's required. It's not, the opportunity exists because we're remodeling, so this is not a really, like, benefit or gift to the community. The other things, I'm just not, there's so many things that we have, that have been talked about and brought up on this project. This maybe will help you have the list of the specific exceptions that were made, the deviations that were approved. So, what I wanted to really point out, and I just, you know, I've prepared a lot of remarks, and it's just seems unlikely that there's a point in presenting them, but these existing fences are the fences that belong to the property owners. The story about the footings and whatever else this now deemed masonry wall we'll take care of are optional, so it's not a favor to the people to build a wall that does not have the durability, sustainability, strength, functionality of a concrete masonry wall or CMU wall or any other type of, they could do it with brick, to the masonry wall that would protect these residences for the years to come. The other issues have to do with not acknowledging or completing the sign requirements. The county's comparison of equivalent sites that should, that, in order to suggest that it's okay that they don't meet the standards, is rather off the wall. The How About Arden site is nearly 30 acres. This project is nine acres. This 37-foot sign faces towards an entirely commercial, no residential backup neighborhood. It is an amazing exception to the Arden Arcade sign district goals. The developer did originally plan a much larger sign, and yes, they did shrink the sign, but they didn't shrink it quite to what the sign requirements are. And by approving that exception, we're basically saying, eh, take a little this time, it's not that much, and if everybody takes a little more each next time, it's going to be a lot. And the reason for having a sign district and controls on size is to keep consistency. The How About Arden signs were really put up in a completely different area, and their exception is quite wild, but they're just not a comparison.
Could you begin winding up your comments, please?
Okay. The other comments I have relate to the non-compliance with the SEQUAC requirements for study and consideration of traffic, safety, air, and all those issues. And I think that we have, rather than try to put in my words, as the retired lady on the corner, what our complaints were, we have provided to you considerable expert testimony on our concerns about those conditions. The final thing that I have to bring to your attention, I mentioned when I first started out, but I need to shop on, is that there is a defect in this project, having bifurcated part of it for a non-discretionary project and carving out the rest of the project for discretionary review. Basically, this is a workaround the state law, and for that reason, I do believe this should be sent back to the developers and corrected.
Okay, thank you very much. Next would be the applicant. Ms. Linderman, are those, Ms. Linderman, are those your papers on the desk there?
There's no papers.
Oh, there's something right there.
Kleenex.
Oh, kleenex, okay, sorry, I thought it was your paper, it was from here. There we go, now I can see it, thank you.
It is paper.
I got that right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Gregory Thatcher, and I represent Merlone Geyer. I do have Gary Molyatt and John Plumta with me today from Merlone Geyer, in case there are questions that I cannot answer. I think it's clear to the board at this point that this is the rehabilitation of an old shopping center, one that's been around for as long as I've lived in this town, one that I frequent, one that I see every day. I drive past this shopping center every day, and I would think that most people would be cheering the fact that it's going to change, because there aren't many centers that are more outdated than this particular center. We should be encouraged in it, because it's not easy to do, and what you've seen just this past week or two at Country Club Center is an example of what can happen at these old centers and the blight that they can bring. Merlone Geyer is also the right developer to be doing this. Their track record is amazing, they have centers all up and down the West Coast, they have several centers here in our region, a couple of which you may be very familiar with, University Village, which is completing a major renovation at this time. They are also the developer of the new shopping center, Delta Shores, in the southern part of the city. Rehabilitation of old shopping centers brings challenges, many challenges, because you are working with the constraints of that existing center and everything that is around it. Here, what's going to happen is you're going to get a modern center, you're going to get new tenants, you're going to have a greater diversity of tenants, you're going to bring desired uses to that shopping center, you're going to upgrade the look architecturally, you're going to have shade in the parking lot, and I was there last weekend, and if the sun had been shining, I think the only shade I could have found was under the shopping cart. It's going to eliminate two driveways along Watt Avenue, which I think will be extremely helpful, and it's going to bring new LED lighting to the parking lot, and there's more. But those are the types of things that you're going to get with this shopping center. I also want the board to understand that everything that Merlone Geyer is proposing to do at this center could be done as a matter of right. These two buildings that we're looking at, we did not need to have discretionary permits to build them. The only reason that we are here is that we're seeking three deviations to make the center better. It could still be built without those deviations, but it simply would not be as good of a center. The trash enclosure you've heard about, it's going to be closer to the street, the reason it's going to be closer to the street is so it's not in a drive lane, so that it is more safe for the employees to access, particularly when it has ADA considerations, and frankly, the alternative is to put it up against the existing wall or fence, which would be directly next to a neighbor's yard, something that we have not wanted to do. The signs are really modest in character. We're talking about such minor changes in these signs, and what are you getting with those modern, with those changes? You're getting a planter, you're getting architectural detail on those signs, and actually, the size of the tenant name on the signs is smaller than what exists there today. The drive-through, it is being done again as a matter of safety. It allows the building not to be out in the drive aisle, so as you're driving through the center, you have to jog around. It is a much safer and easier way to go, and as your planning director has indicated, it is also consistent with the design guidelines that your board has adopted. The wall, the wall is a masonry wall. Your staff has determined that it's a masonry wall. The DrAC determined that it was a masonry wall and that it met code. Why is it being done? Well, for one, we think it's more attractive, but beyond that, and you've heard about the landscaping, it would be very, I think, confrontational almost to go in there and start ripping out people's backyards, killing their landscaping, damaging what is there. So, it's being done as a good neighbor policy to put this wall, this wall in, and as we said, it has stability, it has long-term durability, and it will be more attractive. Finally, let me address the SEQUAC concerns. You have a letter in front of you, two of them in fact, from Mr. Mooney and his expert, Mr. Smith. One of the allegations is that we are piecemealing this project. Ms. Linderman brought that up as well. This project is not being piecemealed. The test for piecemealing is very simple and very clear. Do the phases of the project have independent utility? Can they stand on their own? Does one depend on the other? They do not. They can all stand on their own. They have independent utility, and it is not piecemealing. The first letter from Mr. Mooney complained about the drive-through, arguing that we had not looked at that in enough detail, that we had lumped it into the whole shopping center standard, and it should be isolated and looked at in greater detail. Staff did that, but we hired KD Anderson and Associates, traffic engineers, to look at that, and they too determined that it did not meet the county's thresholds of significance, provided that the space utilized for that is no more than 2,000 square feet. And guess what? The project as proposed shows it as 2,000 square feet. Condition two in Design Exhibit A hold us to 2,000 square feet for that. So, the county's thresholds of significant have not, not been met. They also suggested, the latest letter, that perhaps you ought to be looking at everything in this shopping center as fast food, or certainly the two building pads. That's neither realistic and nor, nor fact. It's simply not going to happen. There is one drive-through, only one drive-through being sought, and that would be the only area where there would be service, and it's going to be, at this point, designed as coffee. So, that is the plan for this, at this point in time. I would say that the methodology used here is common for all shopping centers. You don't know when you build a shopping center who your tenants are, they come later. In fact, once you have a tenant, you don't know that that tenant's going to stay. That tenant may move, and another tenant, having a different kind of business, is going to come into the center. That's why the methodology that is used for this combines all of those things, looks at it nationally, and those are the kinds of things that traffic engineers use to make these determinations, particularly on shopping centers. And that's exactly what was done here. Finally, Mr. Mooney makes the argument that there is lay expert evidence that ought to be considered. I have read the letters, there are, there is a lot of speculation, but there is no evidence to support the speculation that is out there. So, with that, Madam Chair, I would conclude, we would encourage you to deny both of these appeals, allow this really great project to move forward, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Nastoli?
Greg, just, again, you're not the expert on fences, but I guess, looking at the pictures and you heard some of the questions I asked of Cindy, that in looking at least at some of the photographs that staff took, and I trust you've seen this page?
I have.
Yeah, and I know you're familiar with the site. What it looks to me like is beyond the paved area where the parking, you know, parking spaces are striped, and actually the bumpers are there, where the extension of, you know, the cars over those, that there's a pretty good space in there. Now, I don't know if there's utilities in there, and that's why, because there's no landscaping, even with this gentleman or whoever just built this wall, but in some of these other pictures, I see similarly situated fences of all different types. You know, I guess what it lends me to think about is that if that fence were to come easterly or southerly, not to necessarily encroach on the availability of parking or whatever, that the ability to build that in a more conventional fashion, i.e. a CMU block wall constructed in place versus fabricated concrete masonry fence, so, any thoughts about, I guess I'm trying to get some, some sense about, in looking at this, whether, again, it requires some accommodation, there's expense, and I get all that, but I'm just trying to get some, as I look at these pictures and think about how that fence might be placed without encroaching severely, I've been, there's going to be some tree roots along there, I trust, but.
Yeah, I think, I think there are a lot of issues, Mr. Nastoli. Your first question is, could you build a CMU wall here? Of course you could, with consequences. And in balancing the consequences, we believe that the precast is a better way to go. Secondly, I think that there is the desire to try to accommodate neighbors, including the gentleman who has put up what looks to be like a very nice wall and went to some expense, although it may be a little high, but we're going to try to work with him so that his wall does not have to come down. I would also say that this is common over time, some places have incre- Some places have encroached into this property. I'm not saying massive encroachment, but slowly but surely, those things happen. We're trying to accommodate all of that. So you balance all of those factors, plus what we've considered to be the aesthetics of it, we simply think it's a better way to go.
Greg, has there been, I trust there has been, at least with some adjacent property owners, and we've received many letters, some from the median area, some from beyond, but about preferences as it relates to, I mean, I can imagine most people want to preserve their trees and whatever else is in their yards, but about their, I mean, was there kind of a door-to-door, or I don't know how many owner occupied versus maybe...
Heard from some of those neighbors, have reached out to many of those neighbors. Some are rentals, and some are not, obviously. You get a mixed bag. I don't know whether we'll hear from anyone today, Mr. Natale, but I can say we're trying to work with each and every one of those neighbors to be as accommodating as possible and not disrupt their landscaping, or their life for that matter.
But as far as preferences, though, did you hear any of that? Or was that the mixed bag you're referring to about what people would like?
Well, I have not personally had all of those conversations. In reading the material that I've read, the kinds of things that I have heard, read from the neighbors, is that they don't want their yards destroyed. That's been the biggest issue that I have heard.
Which is what I've heard all time. Haven't heard any complaints about the fence, just don't mess with my backyard.
So the fence that was built by this gentleman, is that something, again, I don't know that it conforms to code, certainly not a concrete fence, except for the, you know, the bottom portion of it, is that something that could be considered for the entirety of the center there? I mean, I don't know what it takes...
Well, I don't think it would meet your county's standards at all. I mean, your county's standards call for a masonry wall. The prefab concrete has been deemed to be a masonry wall by two, by your design director as well as the DrAC.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Greg.
I don't see any other questions at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll have public testimony. Quite a few of them here, so I'll read a couple names at a time. The first is Marion Siller, then Karen Plattner, and then Paula Lawrence.
Karen Plattner, she's not here any longer? Okay.
If you'd introduce yourself first.
Sure. My name is Marion Siller. I reside on Devonshire Road directly behind the Arden Creek Town Center. I've lived at this address for over 30 years. I've raised my family at this address, and my children graduated from the San Juan Unified School District. Until my retirement five years ago, I worked in retail, development, and management. We are here today on behalf of the Arden Creek Town Center neighbors. It is difficult to stand before you and not say that I was extremely excited upon learning of the remodel. However, that excitement has been tempered as approval for every one of the requests from the developer for deviation from the current zoning codes, signage requirements, setback requirements have been met with approval that appears to have no concern for the neighbors. In today's environment, you're lucky to be working with a developer that is strong and does quality work. Merlone Geyer is one of those developers. With proper guidance from this Board and input from the neighbors, this project could have been something we would all have been proud of. It was well within reach. The neighbors who back up to this center are already experiencing transient traffic, break-ins, and break-ins along with garbage that's thrown in their backyards from what amounts to a back alley between them and the shopping center. Now, the wall that has been promised to these residents with any redevelopment of the center has been reduced to a composition imitation that will do no good to protect them from predators or keep the garbage and the noise out. Merlone Geyer has expressed that it is cost prohibitive to build a masonry wall. But if this truly, if they truly hold this project, as they have stated they will, then they can recapture their dollars in future rents as the center matures under their guidance. They would need to amortize the wall just a little longer. Unfortunately, this project has been fully approved for all intent purposes, with the exception of the appeal of these two pads on Watt Avenue. My question today is simply why? Why did Merlone Geyer receive carte blanche variances to code on this property without any compromise or concern for the neighbors of the center, the safety of the students who are entering and exiting Arden Middle School, the public at large traveling Watt Avenue and Arden Way every day? While this developer has done local projects such as Delta Shores and University Village, I'm not aware of any local projects they have done that abut residential neighborhoods and schools. In 1996, I worked on Country Club Plaza located at Watt Avenue in El Comino. At that time, Watt Avenue and Arden Way was the second heaviest-traveled intersection in Sacramento County, with Watt Avenue and Fair Oaks being number one. I cannot imagine that traffic has become less during the last 20 years. There are only two ways over the American River, Watt Avenue and Howe Avenue. It will be a long while, if ever, before any other bridge will go over that river. The traffic on these thoroughfares will only grow. Watt Avenue is the only thoroughfare between Business Loop 80 and Highway 50. According to DOT statistics, this intersection has a daily traffic count of over 100,000 cars. In 2016, there were two fatal car accidents at or near this intersection. If you observe this area, you will see that semi-trucks use Watt Avenue frequently, often traveling at speeds in excess of 60 miles an hour. If these fast-food locations or drive-throughs are moved closer to Watt Avenue, what will happen when a car decides to make a quick maneuver to go drive through the accelerated turn? Will the car or semi-truck behind him be able to stop in time? From the spectator point of view, the advantage of greater setbacks is time to adjust vehicles for ingress and egress. I have seen no traffic mitigation reports or any information at all on how the developer and the county would propose to mitigate the impact of moving the setbacks closer to the road throughout the property. Is there a way to mitigate the vulnerability of the students leaving school with their cell phones and iPods plugged in their ears? How would traffic be handled during peak hours of school drop-off and pickup now that the developer has received a variance to put the buildings closer to the road? The reduced landscaping that has now been approved provided a buffer between the center and Watt Avenue. It reduced noise pollution and would have been in compliance with other businesses along Watt Avenue that were required to have this landscaping. Along with other duties, we believe that the Board of Supervisors has been tasked with the protection of the citizens living in the county. We look to this Board to do the best within their power to protect us and look out for the long-term good of the community while planning for the future. But tax dollars are not always the best measurement of what is right. Handing this developer every request he has made is not in the best interest of the citizens who live in tandem with the center. It is not in the best interest of the kids at Arden Middle School, and it is not in the best interest of anyone driving a vehicle on Arden Way or Watt Avenue.
Ms. Siller, could you wrap up your remarks? You're way over time.
I'm sorry. The developer in this business is in business to make money, and I understand that. The developer will more than likely sell this project and move on, leaving this Board to deal with any major issues that happen in the future. I guess the question then will be why?
Thank you. Paula Lawrence. Then Lenny Forster and Carl Doak.
Good afternoon. I'm Paula Lawrence. I am a layperson. I'm just a resident of Arden Park. I have lived in Arden Park since we bought our home in 1997, and we have three kids that we've raised there. My youngest daughter currently goes to Arden Middle School. I do most of my shopping within the 10-minute radius around my home, so I frequent this area all of the time. So I do have several concerns regarding this shopping center. I'm also a cheerleader for the shopping center overhaul. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for some, you know, great new life to come into our area, although I don't want that to bring more negativity into our area. We currently have, you know, quite a problem with homeless population that is residing in the neighboring parking areas, right around this shopping center area, including the shopping center area. We do have quite a problem with people coming through our neighborhoods at night and breaking into cars that are left unlocked, or actually breaking into cars that are locked, breaking into homes, different types of thefts like that. So it is in our interest of the community and of the developer and any future people that are going to be, you know, leasing these properties, to make sure that this shopping center is a great place. And what I look at is their other project, University Village. I would love to see something like that. And when I look at University Village, I think that that project is more similar in size than when you try to compare it to something like How About Arden or Country Club Plaza. So when you're looking at the signage, the University Village signage, I have not measured it, but I don't think it comes near 15 feet tall. And that's, you know, the way the signage is there at University Village, I think that would be more appropriate sizing for a, you know, project like this. And as far as this drive-through establishment, I had gone to earlier community meetings about this, and it was, they were talking about it being a 24-hour drive-through, that it was approved for a 24-hour drive-through. I have not heard any mention of that today, as far as it being still approved for 24 hours. But I have also heard that the company that will be coming in, or I think that's proposed to come into that drive-through, is going to be a coffee company, which I know probably wouldn't be open for 24 hours. But in the future, what if they do move out like these other, you know, big stores like Walmart or Sam's Club that have now moved out of their current buildings? What if that happens in the future? I don't want to see another 24-hour fast-food place or any fast-food place. The area is actually already saturated with fast-food restaurants. We have Taco Bell, Jack in the Box, Burger King that are all open 24 hours a day, as well as an AM PM that is 24 hours. There's a Subway, a McDonald's that are open until 9:30 and 11:00 p.m. respectively. This intersection...
Ms. Lawrence, you're over your time limit. Could you make your final comments?
Okay. I just want to say that this intersection is similar to other, another intersection down the street on Arden and Howe, where they only have two 24-hour fast-food places there. And it's similar in traffic and that sort of thing. Sorry, I don't have time to talk about my other concerns, but just know that there are concerns, although, you know, we, I do welcome this project, but I think that there are some other things that need to be looked at.
Thank you.
As I said earlier, I'm Lenny Forster. I live in Arden Park. And I want to start, I'm going to focus just on the fence issue, because, you know, to focus on much else would be much too long-winded for the time allotment. I want to go back a little bit in time for you all, to a time in this trajectory that you, I'm sure, have not been privy to. There's been a lot of contention from Cindy Shear and from Greg Thatcher that the reason for the fence being a pre-cast concrete fence, wall, is that it's going to save the landscaping and the electrical and la da da da. I don't really believe that that is the motivation. I believe the motivation is to save money for the developers and that they figured out a way to make it look like it was a good reason. I mean, I feel like that the reason they're giving is a good reason to make it sound great that they're putting in this fence. I'll tell you why. 10 days before the June CPAC, there was a pre-cast concrete wall. The development had been modified since the first CPAC. And in that CPAC agenda, 10 days before the June CPAC, there was, they stated, there was a pre-cast concrete wall, and it was listed as a special development permit, the fourth. Right now, there are three. It was listed as a fourth. That morning of the CPAC, which was June 22nd, it was still listed on the agenda, the special development permit. We all showed up at the CPAC, about 60 of us. It was the second CPAC. There were 100 people at the first one in opposition to this. And it was announced, five minutes into the CPAC, that no more special development permit is needed for that wall because an architect with the county has determined that a masonry wall and a pre-cast concrete wall are the same thing. So therefore, no special development permit is needed. Well, having had a heads-up that they were going to do this pre-cast concrete wall, I had been researching it for a few days as to whether or not they were the same, and I got a lot of input from contractors who do those kind of walls that said, no, they're not. To make them the same in terms of their functionality and their longevity, it takes a lot to, that you have to put into a pre-cast concrete wall, such as a lot of rebar, deep, deep, deep piers, much deeper than the developer indicated they were planning on putting in at the CPAC. So we were all shocked by that. At 11 something that night, the CPAC agenda got changed, so that special development permit for the masonry wall got taken off. A few days subsequent to that, one of our neighbors sent a letter to, or a note via email to Ms. Shear. I'd like to read it to you. It says, "Where in building code, zoning code, other codes can I find a legal definition of what is a masonry wall as required in zoning code section 5.2.5D? The favor of your reply is urgently requested." The response from Ms. Shear, please the attachment. Thank you. And I'd like to read what was sent back, what was in the attachment.
Ms. Forster, you're over your limit, so if you could summarize your comments.
Okay, I will finish this. I want to just drive this point home. This email that she sent as an attachment was sent to Ms. Shear, apparently in her, in response to a request from her to one of the architects, three hours before that CPAC meeting where the special development was announced as not being, or the special development permit was announced as not being needed. This is what it says. "According to the Dictionary of Architecture and Construction, masonry is defined as the art of shaping, arranging, and uniting stone, brick, building bricks, et cetera, to form walls and other parts of a building. So the wall type in question could be defined as masonry. I can look up in other books that define masonry as a fraternal organization that meet at masonry lodges."
Ms. Forster, you're a minute ten over your limit, so...
That's fine. I don't find this adequate research to determine that no special development permit is needed and that the contention that landscape, it's due to landscaping needs of the surrounding neighbors was not brought up until much later in this equation.
Okay, thank you very much. Carl Doak, then Kathleen Strickland.
I'd like to increase the podium, raise it a bit. My name is Carl Doak, resident of Del Paso Manor. I'd like to bring...
Just to confirm, it's a three-minute limit here.
Yes, yeah, I think I'll make it.
Has some misunderstandings about that.
I'd like to bring up two issues that deal with traffic. One deals with traffic at the site, and the second deals with traffic on Watt Avenue. As was mentioned, Arden Middle School is right across the street from the project. The reason that is very safety concern is that parents, when they're driving west on Arden, it's very difficult to make a left turn against traffic eastbound to get into the school parking lot. So they pick, they drop off and pick up their kids at the shopping center. Now, the problem with a drive-through is you get your latte at the window, you have one hand on the steering wheel, one hand on your cup, and you're distracted. I do have concern for the safety there. One of our residents counted 60 to 70 kids in the parking lot after school was let out last year. My second concern deals with Watt Avenue. I had previously emailed to each of you a very detailed list of a traffic assessment done by K.D. Anderson back in 2014 on behalf of Anton Development for the Butano Apartments. I tried to find on the Transportation Department website any other kind of traffic counts for Watt Avenue and Arden, but I found only one back in 2012, so the K.D. Anderson one is more relevant. So the Katie Anderson one is more relevant. They had identified 50,000 trips, daily trips, northbound of Cottage on Watt Avenue there. And that makes the level of service E. A level of service E is unstable flow operating at capacity. When you reach 54,001, you're now at a level of service F, which is force or breakdown flow. I have on here, as you can see, the 50,997, then I have question marks, increased due to improved Country Club Plaza, increased due to improved economy, question mark. The point I'm trying to make is there has not been a traffic assessment done on Watt Avenue for a long time, and things have changed. It's far easier with having land use policy mitigate traffic than to have to pour concrete to add more lanes. So I respectfully ask you to at least require a traffic assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Strickland, and then Michael Seaman.
I'm Kathy Strickland. I live in Arden Arcade near Howe and El Camino. I've been there for almost 40 years. I also am the admin and researcher for Vintage Arden Arcade. I have 700 and some members in that group. It's a historic group. I come to you because a couple of times there have been people who have talked about University Village. University Village, of course, is the cities. They made the decisions and whatnot for University Village. And I believe the same contractor did University Village.
Developer, yeah.
Pardon?
Developer.
Thank you for correcting me. It seems to me that what we need as a county is to redefine what we want to see in Arden Arcade. Other communities, as well as Floren, I mean, we could go throughout the whole county making this difference. What we see at University Village is something of great beauty, something that will draw the customer in, something that will invite the customer to stay, shop, maybe go to that store over there they hadn't noticed. What you all are approving for Arden Arcade, up and down Watt Avenue, and Country Club Plaza, and Center are next, is just garbage. It isn't pretty. It isn't inviting. A few trees does not make it a place to want to be, a place to want to sit and have a cup of tea or a drink after work. One of the early, early things that we were talking about when we all got together on this project was, you know, it used to be we could walk from our home in Arden Park up and sit down in a restaurant, have a cocktail, and go to the next restaurant and have dinner. We can't do that anymore unless we want a hot dog and a cup of coffee. We need to rethink, pardon me, you all need to rethink, and the Planning Commission needs to reconsider what we want Arden Arcade to look like. Do we want it to look like any town USA? Or do we want it to look like University Village? Back in the day, in 1948, Jaris Strezak and John Davis built Town and Country Village, which, again, due to this august body, is no more. In the Bay Area, there is another existing project that they also built that has boutique stores all through it. It's gorgeous. I saw it a couple of months ago. We need to rethink how we allow the developers to build. We need to bring beauty back, not just ordinary beauty. One more thing, when the developer for How About Arden, who did a lovely job, by the way, a lot of problems there, but anyway, when he built, he had, he asked to take down the cinema that was there, the domes. I personally objected to that. I lost, I'm good with that. They, they're moved ahead. However, at the design review, the developer, Sufi, I believe is the name of the company, said, "You know, we're going to put up a nice art piece in memorial to the dome. It will be there." And I said, "Oh, thank you. That's, that's really nice, but we'd really like to keep our dome, but be that as it may." There was no art. Why don't we have art? Why don't we demand art? Why not?
Robert Dugan, then Chris Sinclair, and then Tim Cahill.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. We believe that the proposed redesign of the Arden Creek Town Center will be a unique opportunity to be, bring in attractive and just wonderful amenity to an otherwise blighted area. As you all know, I think we have the Arden Arcade Business Council, our members in the Arden Arcade area. For years, we've talked about reinvigorating the Arden Arcade area, and now we have an opportunity to take a blighted center and turn it into an appealing place and modernize it. Obviously, there's some issues raised today relative to the planning, but what we know is that the developer here has a track record of building a quality product, and they've built quality products elsewhere in the region. And with this revitalization effort, they're prepared to spend about $10 million helping address some of the blight issues that some of the residents have complained about already here this afternoon. By providing a modern commercial center near existing and future housing, they're going to be providing more jobs for those young people near where they live. They're going to be providing more retail opportunities for the folks that live in that immediate neighborhood. They're going to be breathing new life into the neighborhood. When we brought this to our Arden Arcade Business Council, they greeted it with quite a bit of optimism and excitement, that it's been a contribute to what is the revitalization of that overall neighborhood with the other projects that are going forward. So with that, we would ask that you respectfully consider supporting this project and help continue the revitalization of the Arden Arcade area to address a lot of the economic issues that it's been facing over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Chris Sinclair, and then Tim Cahill.
Hello, my name is Chris Sinclair, and I've lived in Arden Park since 1987. I've recently retired as Executive Director of the Association of California Symphony Orchestras, and our state office was located in Arden at Charles C. Bell on Cottage Way. While I've worked in public policy my entire career, I'm new to community organization. My topic, as part of our collective testimony, is about the process of a transparent government. I'm appalled at how little respect the Board of Supervisors has from so many of our neighborhoods in Arden, because you have not been transparent in your dealings with developers or with the people you represent. You're not hearing our concerns. Regarding our CPAC, the CPAC members are appointed by you all, thereby beholden to you and carrying out your wishes, not the communities. And to my knowledge, they have never enabled developers in the community to engage in meaningful conversations. As the developer said that he had spoken with the neighborhood, he had not. This would be useful and welcomed. We have a false sense of security with CPAC. We assume those folks are here to hear and speak for the community, not do your bidding, but sadly, they don't seem to have been encouraged to do that. About the county, many times, we can't get an honest or timely answers from the staff whose job it is to assist the people or you, the officials who were voted into your offices. I've witnessed county staff come to a CPAC meeting unprepared, act officiously, and demean our advocacy. We would ask that you listen and not run away or hide from the community you serve. This whole process of zoning, developers, and the flagrant disregard for the laws that are on the books is simply maddening. There has to be a better way than the us versus them mentality that is driving our testimony here today. We look to you to correct this. I'd like our county to be known as the most authentic, transparent, and compassionate in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm Tim Cahill. My wife and I live at, on Winding Creek Road. We've lived there for almost 30 years. We've raised our children there, and our neighborhood is right there. I use this particular shopping center all the time. The Rite Aid is my drugstore. I sometimes use Smart &amp; Final. Unfortunately, there isn't anything else to use there that I can. And I'm absolutely ecstatic that they're going through this redevelopment. I wholly support it. I've looked at the, the site plan. I'm intimately aware of what's there now. This shopping center looks like 1970s, and we need to bring it into the 21st century. The amount of landscaping, the amount of trees, new buildings up front will break up that vast sea of asphalt, which is just unbearable in August. I'd also hope that with the new shops that are coming in, that there'll be more facilities that I can visit. My wife and I go to dinner a number of times, and we typically go downtown. I'd like to stay near our neighborhood. I've listened to a lot of the complaints and comments. There is no project that is ever perfect, but perfect is oftentimes the enemy of the good, and I would urge you to support this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Karen Klinger, then Greg Thomas, then Doug Bayless. And that's all the speaker sheets I have.
I think there are a lot of errors here. The people who are never at the table, never invited, are the neighborhoods. We could, we probably would not be here today if we were the stakeholders included in the process. We are not included in the process. This is your fault, the County Board of Supervisors, actually, the people who fall under you. They do not include us. We are not stakeholders. There are many problems with this. Safety is a huge issue. And the, by the way, the picture that you were shown on Watt Avenue, that's the back of the building. That's not the front of the building. Aesthetics, there will be no restaurants, so we don't walk to restaurants. We don't eat, I don't eat fast food. It's going to be a rare day when I'm going to consider having a piece of chicken or a hamburger, which I enjoy when I do. But aesthetics is huge. Buildings not fronting on Watt Avenue. You're comparing this nine-acre parcel to those that are huge, absolutely much larger. Matter of fact, How About Arden, there is certainly no school across the street. There's certainly nothing but commercial, Kel Expo across, constantly nothing but commercial land around it. And that probably goes the same with the stones in the, in the village. They are much larger parcels. So when you use comparables, use the same size, the same amount of acres. That is a huge mistake in real estate. Safety, again, is number one. Signage is always a huge problem in zoning, always a big problem. And with this nine-acre parcel, when you increase the height on a small portion of land, you are actually increasing the sighted, the sight of that signage because of the smaller area. And the two areas, communities, that are off to the north and to the east, these people are not being treated fairly with the fence. That looks like an easement to me because of the telephone poles. The neighbors, I'm sure, would be more concerned about safety. And why the one person to the north probably spent $20,000 to build that masonry wall with a fence that looks very well enforced to hopefully keep anybody from an open shopping center getting over that and scaling that wall. The prefab that you were talking about will require maintenance. A masonry wall that is truly defined as a masonry wall, which is made of concrete blocks, does not need maintenance. It'll last forever. I'm very disappointed in the lack of invitation for communities and neighbors to be invited to the table because this will happen again and again, because our neighborhoods are not considered. We are the, we are the stepchildren to the county. We live in the unincorporated area county, where our money goes to help other neighborhoods and cities and not those of us in the unincorporated area. Congestion is huge. The traffic study, that should be a lawsuit in itself, that a traffic study is not included in this project with a school. And I might remind you, I want improvement, and to call this area blighted calls our whole neighborhoods blighted. And I think that is disgraceful, and I want an apology from that gentleman that continues to refer, refer to our neighborhoods as blighted because it does nothing but invite redevelopment and infill development, which this is, and that's why this is being pushed through so quickly, because barriers are always removed for infill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klinger. Mr. Thomas, I want to ask you to pause for a second. I had skipped Michael Seaman's much earlier, so you'd come to the microphone.
Thank you, Supervisor Peters. I, my presentation was given to the county IT people, and I don't know how to cue it up.
Metro Cable has a presentation, if you want to call it up?
Yes, they do in the back, yep.
Okay. We'll wait for a second, and hopefully, it will appear on the screen.
Is this, is this forward and back? Is that how I do that? Okay.
Yeah, just the arrow. That's forward, that's back.
Okay, great, thanks. So, Michael Seaman, I live on Marywood Drive. You already have copy, another copy of my, my wife and my letter that we sent to you for the prior meeting. And we go into detail there on dysfunctional wall, the need for complying with state law on variances and so forth. I won't, I won't reiterate that. I'm just going to give you a quick little PowerPoint on, on the signs. I hope all of you are totally clear that nobody in the community objects to having a commercial shopping center at the corner of Arden and Watt. What we're hoping for is it will have a good one. We used to have this kind of shopping center signage. This is from Country Club Center from way back in the day. And you'll notice that there are signs on the buildings as well as signs out in the monument sign environment. A lot of these old signs are still around. They're still just as ugly as they used to be. There have been some improvements over the years, and we thank the county for making that happen. There's also been some backsliding, and that's a problem. A lot of shopping centers, a lot of strip malls try to say absolutely too much, and it's really not possible or practical for drivers to redo signs and say, "Oh, hey, I want to pull in there." That's the kind of thing that we need to get some control on. More recently, shopping centers have started to figure out that people have cell phones, and that makes a lot more sense. So what we're asking is, for signage, can we eliminate the noise? Can we eliminate the shouting? This is everything you need to know about the Pavilion Shopping Center. One sign, and it's very discreet, it's very attractive, it's very cool. I don't know why we can't have more of that. This project is opting for big signs. This developer is saying, "I want my signs to be big. I want to have the names of all my tenants on it." The same developer at a center in the other, in another jurisdiction not far away, has very good-looking, much more discreet signs that actually, if they use these at the Arden Creek Town Center, would comply with the county's ordinance. So, bottom line...
Mr. Seaman, if you could pause there. Could you back up?
Sure.
Do you know how tall those signs are?
That's, that's the UV.
The UV signs. Do you know how tall they are by any chance?
They're, they're actually, they all comply with your rules.
With the county rules?
Yes.
So we did ask some questions about that, so we could address that.
They're not, these signs exceed the county's rules.
I understand that. I was just trying to compare them. Comparing a drawing to a built sign is kind of tough.
These are nice. I don't know why we can't have something nice like this. Because the real bottom line is, what's the point of having signs?
You're responding to what they look like.
What is the point of having signs that are a little bit bigger than the county's They look like they're about 10 feet.
They are about 10 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good eye.
Supervisors, hi, I'm Greg Thomas. I live at 4052 Esperanza Drive in Arden Park. Supervisors, hi. I'm Greg Thomas. I live at 4052 Esperanza Drive in Arden Park. I have been there for 28 years, and actually grew up in Arden Oaks, within an eighth of a mile from Arden Creek Town Center. I've actually shopped there for almost 50 years. Shows you a little bit of my age. But many people know that where the Lamb's Restaurant was, which are the shops that are currently under construction facing Arden Way, they remember that as Lamb's. Well, I remember it as Herfies. It used to be a hamburger and shakes facility, and man, was that good. I miss that restaurant today. What that points out is, things change, and the center has been left behind, and it is in definite need of some rehabilitation, which is great. Full disclosure, I am a commercial real estate broker. I specialize in representing restaurant and retail tenants in Sacramento Valley. I've been doing that for 30 years. I've seen Merlot &amp; Geyer Partners capabilities. The closest one is obviously the UV, as everybody's been talking about. It changed a C-minus center anchored by Safeway at Howe and Fair Oaks from a C-minus center to an A-plus center. I've actually placed two tenants in that shopping center, both of which are not open yet, but that will add even more power to that particular development. It revitalized that shopping center from a sleepy project to a vibrant asset, and I know that's exactly what Merlot &amp; Geyer Partners will do here. Again, additional examples of Merlot &amp; Geyer's projects include Capital Village in Rancho Cordova, Camellia City on the Folsom Boulevard retail corridor, and obviously the big one that everybody knows about, Delta Shores. I've spoken with lots of my neighbors and friends in both Arden Park and Arden Oaks, and the vast, vast majority of them are excited. They're thrilled to death that a quality developer will be investing their money in our neighborhood center. We currently support the existing tenants, and I guarantee you will support the new ones. I urge you to approve the balance of the development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I might add one thing. A lot of discussion has been talked about in terms of signs, and I will tell you, it's not necessarily driven by the developer. It's driven by my tenants. They want to have exposure. They need to have exposure. It helps their viability and success. So, there's a real tough situation between large signs and too much signs. I guarantee you, my tenants are going to want larger, too much signs. So, it's not necessarily...
As long as you're talking about that, Mr. Siemens showed us the sign at University Village, which is almost as tall, but 10 feet tall, and is a little more subtle, I'd say. So, how does that fit into your...
It's a little less effective from my tenant's standpoints. That subtlety is great for kind of more of an office-type environment. Retail is about splash and flair and brightness, and you'll see that over at University...
There's no office in University Village.
That's the point. It's not what the tenants would necessarily want. They'd want more neon, more brightness, something to attract people to that. Once people have gone into the center, they know they're there, but they still want to attract them there at least that first time. So, signage is really key.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Ms. Bayless?
Good afternoon. I'm Doug Bayless. I live in the neighborhood behind Arden Oaks. I've lived there since 1991, even attended Arden Junior High in the early '70s. So, I remember Herfies. I'm also involved in real estate. I'm accustomed to working on entitling land. So, a little bit different, but I'm used to reading these reports. I went through the staff report, and I recognize there are allowances for special development permit, but it's all within the boundaries of what's been defined as the boundaries to work within. I went through the entire report in detail this morning. I don't have objections, being a neighbor. I look forward to using this neighborhood. I look forward to there being three driveways, not five, off of Watt. I think that will help a lot. I look forward to seeing this tired old center cleaned up. Everybody's wondered for a long time when it would happen. I recognize the process. Nothing's perfect, but I think it's been going through a number of times, a number of adjustments, and I don't think it's by coincidence that, at this point, the application is ending up lined up with the staff report. I would expect there's been a lot of work that's gone into refinements to get there. So, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Linderman, you have a three-minute follow-up, if you would like it.
Well, I do want to thank you for the opportunity to follow up. You've heard two sides to the story, and it's a way to challenge for you to figure out what needs to be done. We do, we all do, want quality, nice development. This is the corner of Watt and Arden. Arden School is one of the oldest schools in the county, and the area behind the shopping center is one of the nicest neighborhoods in the county. This is a gateway to the rural Arden Carmichael area, and we really wish that it would be designed and executed in a way that is an invitation to the commercial that goes up Watt Avenue and to the residential that goes down Arden Way. To do this is, you know, we all want it, but we want it done with the fair execution of the codes of this county. If I want to remodel my house, I'm going to have to bring it up to code. If I want to add a bedroom, well, I can't because the rules you passed in the zoning code don't let me have any more bedrooms. But if I wanted to add something else, I'd have to bring my house up to code. They want to remodel the shopping center, and they knew, these developers are well-versed in this Sacramento code. They knew. They had to bring it up to code. And please, that is what needs to be done. You'd make me do it, I wish you would make them do it. And so, the fence needs to not be, it does need a special development permit if it's not going to be a concrete or masonry, I mean, a masonry wall, because this other wall is not a masonry wall. Check with the building department. Check with the construction people. It's not. But if you want to give it to them and not change the meaning of a word in the code, you know, that's a different story. The egress, the problems, the traffic, I don't know. This is what it looks like in the afternoon when the kids leave school. I don't know how to turn that on. This is what it looks like in the morning. This is where the shopping center is. This is what's on Arden Way. It's just, it needs to have a review and probably mitigation for the safety of our children. You probably use Safe Streets to School money to fix the curb out there along Arden Way. Well, you put that in before the shopping center is expanded. I really think it needs a traffic study and a true plan for safety with the traffic at our corner.
Thank you, Ms. Linderman. I think Plani Director can come back and answer some questions.
Certainly. I have been taking some notes. I don't know if you want me to just launch through them and see if I get to most of it, and then you can add on...
Hopefully, cross most of them off my list.
One of the things I did want to point out, that I don't think I made crystal clear during the presentation, is that the project did evolve through the process, and staff did push back, both staff, the design review administrator, and the design review advisory committee. So, there were quite a number of changes that were made through the process. Initially, there was a desire on their part not to do a wall improvement at all, and the project went to the design review advisory committee the same day that it went to the CPAC. And staff had pushed back, and the design review advisory committee pushed back, and we said, no, you need to do a wall, a masonry wall, the concrete cast wall that we asked for. And that's why it was dropped off, because the request was to do, to leave the walls as is.
To leave the fences in place?
Leave the fences in place. Yeah. So, that's what happened, and that's why it dropped off the CPAC agenda, because the applicant conceded and said, okay, we get that we're not going to get support. We're not going to make it through not changing the fences at all. So, that was the reason for the change to the CPAC agenda, because it was going from a special development permit to leave the walls, to leave the existing fences as is, to the wall that's proposed now. The sign heights, they did initially come in with higher signs and staff, and through the design review process, we did push back and got them to the design and the height that they are now. We did ask some questions about University Village. Those signs are 10 feet in high, very good estimating from a photo by Supervisor Serna. We do understand that that site is in the city, so it's not subject to the county code, and I guess there's a bit of a different trade-off. They get more signs than they would in the county. So, there overall is more sign faces because there's more signs, albeit maybe not quite as high. And they have both external signs...
Leanne, is that their code? That particular shopping center is surrounded by roads, so they're, I could see why they would not, why they would need more signs.
I was told that that's their code by the applicant. I have not independently verified that with city planning staff.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question relative to that? I noticed in the photograph that that particular monument sign was also placed between, I guess, the parking stalls and the sidewalk. It wasn't on the very edge, and it's questionable whether or not it's intended to really, you know, if its principal purpose is to broadcast what's available in the center to drivers versus maybe even wayfinding for people that are already on the premises of the center.
We were told that center has both external signage as well as additional wayfinding signs internal. I don't know which sign that was. I haven't, can't speak to that.
They don't have as much depth of landscaping there as this. It's just a little...
Right. It's not a big field of parking. It's just an aisle.
Right. It's very cramped. In fact, they're doing off-site parking there now.
Right.
They're crossing University and putting it over on Scripps Drive with valet parking.
And I guess, that's a good point in terms of the difference. And the other difference, too, is they have on, you know, they have signage at the front of their stores or their restaurants, and that's because, again, because the nature of the parking is much closer in and of itself to travel lanes.
Right. It is very different design of a center in a different jurisdiction and a different zoning code, so it's a little hard to compare apples and oranges.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Natale. Yeah, just, Leanne, while you're on that, though, that, you know, certainly the amount of face of signs and, you know, where they're at and the height, it all fits in. But what about kind of off-the-shelf with everybody's, you know, branded logo versus something, when I look at the University Village sign, and I know that there's this, you know, deep-seated, you know, obviously a financial one for, you know, whether it's Smart and Final, or PetSmart, or Starbucks, or anybody else, to make sure that their logo and that gets in front of folks. But I see University Village, that, you know, Citibank and Starbucks, they get their, you know, the look, but, you know, there's a conformity and a uniformity that I think is attractive, and it provides some uniqueness to those signs. How does our code address that? Because even what Michael showed with Pavilion's, obviously, they chose to do something with the backlighting and brick and, you know, flower planter, and I saw Save Mart at Lowman's got their sign in down below. But I guess I'm curious as to, you know, these centers as they remodel, because it's, you know, I guess it's great to some extent that they bring them down, or they try to make sure they can advertise to the traveling public and use their logos, but where do either staff or where does the county begin to say, no, it's not just off-the-shelf and, you know, run a strip up the side that says Arden Creek Center. It's, and then everybody puts their colors and logo in there, and depending upon how much square footage or how much they pay to get on the sign, they get that, however that works. And I'm familiar with Delta Shores. I mean, you can see the signs almost from the town of Franklin. They're so high. Welcome to Sacramento. I saw that the other day. But I guess I'm curious is that, maybe the differentiation, again, you're the county planner, so just to get some sense about, because that's been referenced here quite a few days.
Yeah, and I mean, it's through the design review process, and I don't know that, we don't really have a specific design aesthetic, you know, nailed down that everybody has to follow, you know, wood, or, you know, only blue signs in the county, or, I don't know, you know, only brick signs in the county. We don't, it's much more general. So, it is relative to each project. I know, I do know, like, with existing tenants, they have a couple of big existing corporate tenants that I think have a required sign size in their lease. So, that can play a factor. But that doesn't really play a factor for staff and design review. I mean, we just look at what it looks like. That's up to the developer to figure out how to deal with that part.
So, as it relates to colors and, you know, style face and all that, I mean, I don't know how much you get into that in the review. But again, if I heard anything out of all the testimony today, part of it was, at least, that, you know, certainly some uniformity, but also then, you know, things that make it unique. And, you know, that's what people, draws people in off the curb, is that if it's unique and it has those things that they want to patronize. And so, I guess I'm just trying to, curious is that, you know, looking at the signs that were shown in Mr. Siemens' presentation, but we drive around, you know, the county, and you see, you know, you see what kind of looks good, what kind of looks so-so, some's vanilla, some's, you know, and it grabs your eye. And I think uniqueness and certainly newness, but certainly sharpness to all that. And so, are you able to do that in the process? My question is, can you say, it's got to be backlit, you know, it has to be backlit, but only the letters, or does it, can they just use them to drop in the plastic face plates and say, X, Y, Z business?
Honestly, I'm not sure I can answer all those questions about how the design review administrator interacts. We obviously take the developer's initial proposal, and we use the design guidelines, and we push good design. And I know that there was changes to these designs, these signs as it went through. I don't have a before-design review and after-design review. I don't know, Cindy, if you have anything else to add on the design of the signs. Do you want to say?
And I could just say, Leanne, as Cindy's coming up, if I could, that, you know, it's not just up to staff to push. Again, if our guidelines aren't clear enough or directive enough, and it's up to this board certainly to, you know, to look at that. We give those guidelines, but if it's always having to push, then that says to me, then, you know, puts you in a bit of a weak position at times. And so, you know, I don't know how it works in the city or in some other city or county, but, you know, guidelines are guidelines, but they should also be something that you can go to folks and say, hey, you know, we want something unique for this corner in Sacramento County or this community. I'm curious, is there, you know, how do you feel when you're going into that? You're in those negotiations, I trust?
Oftentimes frustrated, but, okay. The signs originally came in, and they were higher, and they were taller, and they were bigger. Okay, so square footage, and then also the height was higher. And as staff, we had several concerns with that. Said that we would have a difficult time supporting those types of signs because they exceeded, so Arden Arcade, there's a special sign corridor there, so we have to look at that separate from what the sign ordinance is. So, we're looking at that, and even though we have other projects where we look to see have the deviations been allowed, and they have been, we still felt for that size of the shopping center and what they were proposing, they were still too large and too high. We took it to the design review advisory committee because that's the committee that we look to as staff. That's what they're appointed for, to find things compliant with the design guidelines, which really don't talk about signs at the time. They didn't talk about signs very much. The DRAQ felt also that they were too high, too large, and that they were, I think, I don't know how to say, I'm not an architect, but they were too square. And so, they had them kind of change the linear part and make it a little more linear where it says Arden Creek Town Center, change that up a bit, make the sign panels a little bit smaller, lower the signs a little bit. Still, they were a few feet taller and a little bit bigger, but they were changing. And I apologize, we should have had the before and afters. I didn't think that we were going to go into that. And the applicant is here. The applicant's attorney spoke, but the applicant's here who was in that, through that whole process, and they might be able to explain it a little bit more, also because they worked with their sign company. But that's what we looked at, and we worked with DRAQ. We also then looked at the design review and the elevations of the buildings that are proposed, and then Phase 1, which was nondiscretionary, but we're trying to look at a large project and see how the signs fit. We also look at the existing signs, and so, what are we getting in return for eliminating what's out there now? Because they can have what they have out there now. And so, those are all the factors that we looked at.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Back to Leanne.
All right. I think I already stated that there was an initial drive-through on the shop. See, that was eliminated in the process. And another key thing that came out of the design review was the key entryway having a landscape median off of Watt. So, that was something that was worked out by design review advisory committee that was added that was not part of their initial proposal.
As long as you're on the drive-throughs, are they 24-hour?
The zoning code does permit 24-hour drive-throughs by right. That, in and of itself, that doesn't necessarily trigger a... The zoning code does permit 24-hour drive-throughs by right, that in and of itself, that doesn't necessarily trigger, uh, uh, use permit. It's their proximity to residential and the setbacks, so those are the kind of things that may trigger a discretionary review. So for a building in a certain location.
So it's 24-hour by right, but it could be modified?
In this case, because there is a discretionary review, uh, you could conceivably condition it because you have a discretionary entitlement upon which to condition. But if they moved the building, um, you might lose that discretionary entitlement permit to condition the 24-hour use. Because a 24-hour use in and of itself isn't what's triggering the entitlement for the shops B. Is that what you're asking me?
No, I'm not asking about moving the building or anything else. I'm saying right now in this hearing.
Yes.
It appears it's, it could be up to 24 hours, but it also could be restricted by this body, correct?
They are asking for, uh, an entitlement for the location of the drive-through. I think that would give you an opportunity, um, potentially to condition the 24-hour use, even though a 24-hour use in and of itself is permitted in the zoning code. I don't, I didn't, we didn't consider that condition, so.
De novo.
Looked at that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I don't know what, I see Cindy's kind of shrugging too. I, I think we'd have to look at it. I, I don't know off the top of my head whether, what they're asking for triggers an ability to impose that condition. I just don't know.
Okay.
If you want to contemplate that, we might need to look into that.
Okay. Do you know there'll be, um, security onsite?
I'm going to have to call Cindy up to address security.
As part of the contemplation, to go back to Krista's question, so the entitlement is not, is not for a use permit for a drive-through. That's a permitted use. The entitlement is for a, a use permit for a drive-through lane location, so it's not for use. So we didn't look at conditions that get into use, which would be time. So that, that was not looked into, the 24-hour, because they are a permitted use. And then, I'm sorry, what, oh, security. I believe the applicant does have their security person here, so I would defer to that. I don't know that I feel comfortable answering questions about security.
Do you want me up or do you want the, we'll have the applicant up at the end? Do you want me to continue on and then we'll have the applicant come up at the end? All right. So with, I think we've covered, um, CEQA and traffic from the staff perspective. We have evaluated that. We're comfortable with our negative declaration.
So there was a traffic study done?
Uh, there was a, a traffic analysis done, yes.
Okay, so analysis is a.
Trigger a traffic study.
Yeah, it didn't tr- trigger a traffic study, but a traffic analysis.
Yes.
Was done in the last 45 days.
Yes.
And it conforms with DOT's.
Yes.
Standards.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and in conclusion, um, I think staff has looked for a good project that's a balance. We've pushed for changes, uh, along the way. We have tried to address the concerns that come up, have come up, and we do value public input, um, and we do want investment here. Um, and so I think those were the things that I had on my list.
Okay, and did you address the Phase One, Phase Two question?
Uh, so the Phase One was the rehabilitation of the existing buildings. Um, that is, uh, those are permitted uses and it's non-discretionary design review. Um, those applications were made on the same day, but we considered it appropriate, um, for the one to go through design, non-discretionary design review and to move forward because they were independent and separate from one another.
Okay. Maybe the applicant could come up at this point. And their security expert, unless, Mr. Thatch, you know the answers to the security.
I can get my water back this way.
Oh, everybody's had a swig out of it. I don't know if you want.
I was wa- I was watching. Um, I'll take them one at a time and I may miss something. Security, yes, there will be security, including at night.
On-site or is it going between there and University Village or?
I think it's onsite, is my understanding.
Currently, security is onsite for this site, the leader's site.
I, I think, yeah, if you're going to talk that much, I need to have you come down and speak it into the microphone so we can get it on the record. Please.
Good evening, guys. My name is Tiffany. I'm actually the property manager on behalf of Merlot Geyer. I, uh, do all the accounts for the, for the property, including security, janitorial, maintenance, all the above.
Okay.
Currently, security is 10 drive-throughs a day, minimum of 25 minutes per time at the weekends, Saturday, Sunday. And then on the weekdays, it is seven drive-throughs, minimum of 25 minutes. I get reports daily for all of those and respond on behalf of what's needed, whether it's a citation for a car that's not supposed to be there, whether it's a transient, uh, we have called sheriff on numerous occasions to do 602s as needed, which is a due to risk pass order. We respond as needed based on all that stuff. The budget for going forward when it comes to the new buildings and/or any increased security as needed will be adjusted, again, as needed. So if it's needed more, then we add more.
We had some testimony that there was, uh, there were burglaries or security problems in the quote-unquote "back alley", so between the back of the current shopping center and the fence. Is, do you know what that referred to?
The only thing I can think of that that refers to is there have been issues with transients going back there and getting into the trash. Unfortunately, that's something that is seen across the, the state.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
However, it is something that is responded to. All the tenants currently there, as well as my job with the new tenants, will be to make sure that they know the policies and procedures of the shopping center, including cleanliness, and then forward, uh, thinking if, you know, they see something that's out of place, they would be calling the security and/or the sheriff. And then our security, of course, will be increased as needed to abate these issues.
Okay, Mr. Serna has a question for you.
Thank you. On the same subject of security, and forgive me if this has been asked and answered already, but with, uh, what's been proposed, would there actually be more, um, video cameras, external video cameras, that would also presumably aid in, um, in making it a safer environment?
So do you have security cameras and will you keep them and?
I don't have them currently for the center. There, I believe there are some on the rear of the majors that are, that are provided by the majors, PetSmart, Smart and Final, and Rite Aid. Um, I don't control those. Those are controlled by their corporate offices. It's something that we can look at if it's necessary.
Yeah, I, I think we'd like to have that.
Yeah, Greg, do you know whether or not, uh, your, your client is, uh, in contact with prospective tenants that would expect to put exterior cameras for security purposes on the, uh, on their buildings, on his building?
I don't, and one of the, one of the issues until this matter was resolved, there hasn't been a lot of tenants, uh, that they've sought to, to sign up. So I think that's on the, on the way, but I'm assuming that cameras today are.
Right.
A fairly, um, reasonably priced item, so.
They seem pretty ubiquitous.
I think putting cameras in at the appropriate locations makes sense, and unless I get an arrow in my back here, I'm, uh,
Do you know if University Village has them?
I don't know.
Do not, okay, but we could require them under, in this hearing?
Yeah, we do not currently have a condition on security cameras, um, but we could add one.
Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Natale had his, he punched in.
Yeah, I was going to ask you a question, well, the lady was still down here, maybe you can answer it, Greg, but. So what is the lighting in that alleyway? Again, I know obviously there's a balance between people's privacy to the, you know, to the east and to the north, but how is that lit? Is there going to be a change in the lighting? And secondly, as it relates to any of the dumpsters or garbage container areas, are those, are those locked? Going to add some new ones in front, but I guess I'm curious about, and that can help address some of the issues in a passive way, but certainly lighting.
You were right that I have no idea what the answer to that question is.
All right, so maybe the property manager.
Usually the back of a shopping center that backs up to a neighborhood doesn't want a lot of light, otherwise it shines in their backyard.
Some ambient, I just wondered.
But like a sodium light?
Yeah.
Those are big steps.
To address this properly, it is definitely an issue with providing too much light into the neighbor's yards. The current lighting on the back of the center, to my knowledge, is the wall pack lighting that's on the back of the buildings. There, you know, could be considered some darkness back there, but again, our security goes back there.
Could you speak up? I'm getting about every third word.
Our, our security is back there, and like I said, currently the, the lighting in the back of the center is the wall packs, wall pack lighting on the back of the buildings. I, I'd have to defer to our architect and/or our construction manager as to whether we're going to have additional lighting back there. But again, the more lighting you put back there, you're going to put it into the neighbor's yards.
So does it meet current standards or will meet current standards? What are those standards, our standards for lighting, you know?
Yeah.
Well, it will have to.
Okay.
Yeah, it will have to.
And what about for your garbage containers?
Oh, sorry. The, uh, the garbage area for the new shop space, shops A, is currently facing the neighbor's yard, neighbors in the back of the center is lit, secured, rolling gates, padlock, not padlock, sorry, key padlock. So it's secured and it is, you know, I mean, I've been involved in the construction to the, as much as my ability because I have experience in trash and in the issues. I am also working with, there's, there's three other trash issues at the back of the center, and I guess I won't call them issues. Rite Aid owns their own compactor, has been for however many years they've been there. I've asked them to clean it up. It's a little bit messy, but other than that, that's, that's theirs. The other two are the Smart and Final and PetSmart trash areas. I'm also working with them on corporate to see if there's anything they can do to make those a little nicer. Ask them to have their waste companies lock them and, and more to that extent.
Thanks.
Okay, and then as long as you're there, do you, well, you're the only one from the project that's speaking, so, um, talk to me about the 24-hour, uh, usage of the, um, restaurants that are proposed.
I don't know.
A 24-hour drive-through?
I may, I may be able to address that, at least in, at least in part.
Add the 50.
We don't have a tenant. There is no tenant there.
I understand that, but what, you've got to be advertising them and telling them what you want them to do.
Right now, the size of that is 2,000 square feet, which lends itself to a coffee, uh, facility of some type. I think it's highly unlikely that they would elect to be open 24 hours. But I think that's as much as we can provide now.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
Other.
There was mentioned by one of the neighbors that the wall is not masonry, but my understanding is that the wall is masonry. Does it require maintenance?
Oh, I think like all walls, I have a masonry wall at my house. It requires some maintenance to it. Probably all walls require maintenance and it will require some, I think, no doubt.
And the property management, the plan is that the property management company will maintain the wall.
Will maintain, well, Merlot Geyer will maintain the wall. They manage their own properties.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'd like to talk about signs a little bit. That's really the, the big thing that's bothering me right now.
Put that a little bit in perspective. I'm told that the signs at University Village are actually 12 feet. Um, and there are 10 of them, um, at University Village.
How many are proposed on this project? Three?
Three. Uh, two are at 15, I think, and one at 12 feet in, in height. Um, again, those signs are a little bit bigger, a couple of reasons for them. They're now put on a pedestal. They have a planter, and they also have the architectural detail on the side of it of the name of the shopping center, Arden Creek, which were things that the design folks had, had suggested be done. So that has resulted in the size of that. I will also say that you have to understand, this is not a brand-new center. This is one that they have bought. They inherited leases with this center. And for those major tenants, they have very clear contractual rights to a type of sign and a size of, style of that sign. And I will tell you that the panels on this sign are decreasing the size for each one of those major tenants. They weren't wild about that, and it was not an easy thing to get them to agree to do. But changing that sign to eliminating their logo, their colors, et cetera, I think is probably, what I'm told, a non-starter with those, with those tenants, and, uh, they would probably have no choice but to leave the existing signs in place.
Well, I would like to know if there, if you can, let's say we were to, um, go ahead with the request on the size of the signs, if there is a way to design them so they are more aesthetically pleasing? These look like every shopping center that you drive by.
Right. I'm sure my client would be willing to take a, a fresh look at it, but I suspect Supervisor Peters, that the, at least if I heard correctly, the biggest concern was about the logo of these various tenants, PetSmart, Rite Aid, et cetera, and the colors, the sign and that.
I didn't pick that up.
Okay, perhaps I misunderstood.
I picked up height and width, um, and aesthetically, I mean, these, I think people are looking for a little bit more aesthetically pleasing product here. I mean, and it, the buildings look like they're going to be nice and there's going to be nice landscaping and a new fence and, you know, and we appreciate that kind of reinvestment, but the fence doesn't reflect the amount of ownership pri- I mean, the fence, did I say the fence? The sign's getting like, the, the sign, um.
And I think.
I couldn't suggest to you what it should look like, but.
I think we could always take a fresh look at it. I just think the challenge is pleasing the tenants, um, because they have clear contractual rights.
Supervisor Peters, are you thinking about something like a stronger, um, reflection of architectural themes in the buildings that makes its way to the sign?
Yes.
Maybe that's.
As, as University Village did.
So maybe that's where a happy medium here lies.
We certainly can take a fresh look at, at that design. I think if the, if the board were inclined to approve the deviation, we would know the parameters we have to work in for redesign.
How would that work, Leanne?
Well, I guess you would have two options. If the board wanted to see some of these changes, um, you could give us general direction. We could come back here. Your other, your other alternative, um, would be to make a decision about what you're going to do today and, but remand this, the sign design back to the DRAC or the Design Review Administrator if you felt comfortable with that with some general parameters. So you have two options, keeping control over the design of the sign yourself, um, or moving forward with a project decision, but sending design review, um, back.
Well, do they have the ability to, uh, deviate from the current standard? I mean, I assume that's what, why they approved this in the first place?
Yeah, I mean, I think there is, uh, a relevance to the comments that some of you have made, including Supervisor Natale early about, earlier about, do our design guidelines really have, uh, the kind of teeth that you want? And that may be something we need to look at separately. Um, I think in this case, if we have the concurrence of the applicant to take a fresh look at the signs, I assume that they would cooperate.
I just got that arrow in my back that I mentioned before. Um, I, I think what I heard from my client was how difficult this sign has been and how difficult it has been to get the tenant's approval. And, uh, not a real big desire to reopen it, but if that's the board's will, it's the board's will.
Any ideas?
Well, I mean, I guess, I, I completely understand the point that's being made. I appreciate it. I think it'd be one thing if this was a new, um, a new center that didn't have the history of these anchors being there for years. But, you know, the consumers in Sacramento County that use this center do have the benefit of having that history shopping there. And so I would ma- maybe argue a little bit that the sensitivity to changes in the sign, um, maybe are a little, little, a little more exaggerated than if it was brand-new and you're trying to get consumers used to the fact that this is a new place to, a new destination. So that's why I think there's some room to, to find a way to, to meet the, the, the needs of the tenants, which I appreciate, and also, um, the needs for a good-looking sign that, you know, the residents can appreciate, that we can appreciate, that you can appreciate. And I'm also hearing the last part of that statement, which is, if that's what the board wants to do, then we'll, you know, we'll figure out how to make it work, so.
I, I understand the idea of a lease. Uh, I'm sure it calls out in the lease how much signage each tenant gets and how big it is and that sort of.
What it looks like.
Pardon?
And what it looks like.
Yeah, okay, and what it looks like. Yeah, okay, and what it looks like. Well, hopefully it could be better-looking than this. Did your client wish to speak?
No, I don't know that wishes to speak. I think, I heard the same message from, from two folks with my client, and it's that they have been through five hearings, um, they have worked extensively with staff with the DRAC, et cetera, to design the sign, so I think what I'm hearing is frustration on the part of my client.
Well, we're, we're kind of down to the short strokes on this, and it involves the sign.
I understand.
So I, I think, uh, it's appropriate to discuss it, um, but I don't think we can design it here. So the, the question, I think, becomes, uh, the, the two options that, that Leanne mentioned, which is it goes back to, the, the sign only goes back to, um, staff and the, uh, Design Review Committee with input, or it comes back to this board, and I, I don't think this board should be involved in designing signs. So, I, I, and I think I heard-
I, I think if we had the approvals, uh, today, and, uh, we worked with staff, that would be the best alternative under the circumstances.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Thatch?
Just, if I could, ma'am chair, just as it relates to, um, to the fence and to the maintenance of it, because we saw some pictures, Greg, of, again, not this property, but where the, uh, a similar type of product has been used, and I could take you to some locations in my district and show you the similar type of product where, over time, it sags, it moves, and it's behind properties, and it, you know, it doesn't get that much attention, may not be broken down or falling down, but, I mean, the aesthetic is certainly not what it was when it went in. So I guess I'm curious, we saw the, um, rendering of kind of the typical, but what sort of provision beyond just the normal maintenance? Because again, a lot of that product out there runs the whole gamut. In fact, just recently, uh, again, it was used, that put-in-place, slide-in-place was you, it was removed along Highway 99, Supervisor Kennedy's history. He and Supervisor Yee worked on that project for years. And, uh, over the years, between time and, uh, the wear and tear of just weather and a few cars running to that location, it really turned out to be something that was pretty pitiful. I'm not suggesting that would happen here, but what assurances that, that this, uh, is going to not just be maintained, but that you, what you're going to use there is going to be of a high standard, I guess, a higher quality? Because I'd just say my preference, uh, would be that figure out a way to put in a masonry wall, a, a laid-in-place one, not a poured-in one that's, that's put in it. Um, I don't see, uh, sense that that's the majority feeling up here, but I guess I would like to have some assurances beyond just, well, the product manufacturer guarantees it for five years, and then, you know, then you're on your own. So i- has there been some attempt to kind of beef it up, I guess, in, in that sense?
Well, I, I'll ask John here in a minute, but I, I can tell you that they tried to find the highest quality they could to do this. So this is, this isn't, you know, bargain hunting here.
Right.
It was really to find a very good product that would stand, uh, the test of time. That's number one. Number two, I will tell you that it's been my privilege to represent Merlon Guyer now for over 10 years, um, and I can attest to the fact that they run their own shopping centers, and they're pretty darn, um, particular about how those look and how those are maintained. I can't imagine them allowing a wall like this to become in disrepair and be, become a problem. Just can't imagine that happening. Um, I don't know whether, I don't know what the manufacturer's guarantee is, do you, John?
Hello, John Plumtoe. I represent, uh, Design and Construction at Merlon Guyer. I'll ask a couple of the technical questions. Um, the, I think we're, I want to start off by just first clarifying, we're falsely assuming that a concrete precast masonry fence is a wrong product or a faulting, failing product. It's not. It's all about the quality of how it's built. Any particular construction can fail over time if it's not done right. And so, um, what we already pointed out previously is why we chose that sign design or that, um, fence design. What I'm pointing out now in terms of the maintenance is that there will be some maintenance obligations on our end that we'll fully maintain. We do with all of our shopping centers, as Greg put, pointed out. Furthermore, the typical maintenance obligations that we have to make sure there's no graffiti, that it's removed properly, if there are broken fences, broken pillars and whatnot, that we repair those, um, in timely manner, um, and certainly that there's no gaps in the fence. And I think some of the, um, folks that are here today have pointed out other failing opportunities that we've seen around the county, where fences are dilapidated, they're falling apart, the fence panels are coming out. That could be because it wasn't constructed right, it could be because somebody's not maintaining it properly. That's not something that we allow happen in our centers. Um, if the fence is built properly, it will hold up for a period of a minimum of 20 years. Um, we do have warranties in place with our contractors, those are typically short-term, but we have property management in place that makes sure that those fences and all the construction throughout our centers and all, um, structures, quite frankly, are taken care of, um, over the duration of time that we own the center.
So have you used this, the product that you're spec-ing out here in other centers you've done remodels on?
Yes, we have, oftentimes, also abutting residential components as well.
Can you just give us a list here locally where you've used it?
Uh, the clearest one would be, uh, out in Rockland, Willa Rock, which abuts a residential center. Um, that is a precast masonry fence on the back.
That was, that was new construction, John, or that was a remodel?
It was also a remodel center. That was converting an existing construction, uh, site to a new tenant, and adding and loading docks and expanding the building, uh, square footage, and then adding, uh, fencing panels and whatnot. Um, we've seen these fencing panels used throughout construction in Sacramento County and the entire nation. Um, the benefit that you have with a precast concrete fence is the fact that you can, uh, use what's called form liners. Form liners are pieces of the fence that look like real building products, such as wood panels, uh, can look like brick, it can take on any shape, any color that we want. Um, the possibilities are pretty much endless. Um, there's catalogs that exist, and some of the examples that I had shown the county previously are representations of fences that look like wood fences, but in fact are not. And so you get the, the benefit of longevity, weather resistance over time, with looking like something that's more of a natural product.
If I could just one follow on that, so what has been approved as relates to the actual look of this? So is it, look like a wood fence? Is it going to be, I mean, we've seen some pictures that were-
The final design hadn't been chosen yet. Um, there's no cost difference for us in whether we go with something that looks like a real wood fence, which is what's there today, and some of the property owners, and, you know, one of the thought is, maybe we do a survey and we see what everybody wants to see. Um, there's other opportunities to make it look like a, a brick wall, or like a CMU wall, or, or just look like a overlapping ship-lap type scenario. So we have not finalized that design, um, and I think within our application, um, it was kind of left open-ended to finalize that design and come back to the county with those design details at the time that we applied for building permit.
Okay, I didn't mean to belabor this, but I thought the design review had already been completed.
From the staff perspective, the wall that we are approving is the, what we are showing you in the slide. Um, if they want to come back and approach us for something different, um, we would have to address that on a case-by-case basis. If they worked out with a neighbor that they requested something else, we'd have to look at it again, but what we're appro, approving is the design that's shown in this slide.
Okay, so that's the approved design?
Yes.
And that was been-
From the Design Review Advisory Committee, yes.
Okay. And that went to, that's one that went to CPAC as well?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
That was going, that did go.
No, it didn't.
Did this design go to the CPAC?
Didn't that go to CPAC?
Uh, we did have some exhibits that we showed CPAC, absolutely, um, and it showed the perimeter fencing, which was the north and the east end of the property. I believe the total lineal footage was somewhere in the 1,500 lineal footage range, um, and we showed just a, a typical example of one of the fences that had been installed on one of the properties that we didn't own. It was adjacent to a Lowe's center, um, very nice-looking fence that was colored brown with some wood panels, um, and we basically had talked about during the presentation, I had, um, gave way that we had multiple options to design that fence, and that hadn't been finalized.
Because did not the CPAC weigh in on that, on the fence?
Um, you know, we don't do a staff, full staff PowerPoint presentation at the CPAC, because it's early on. I don't know if the CPAC saw the wall design or not. I mean, they certainly would have talked about what kind of wall it was. I don't know if they saw a photo of the, of the appearance of the wall.
As a matter of fact, that's how the conclusion was drawn by the CPAC, to try to put the condition in place to make it equal or similar to an actual CMU wall, because during the presentation, we represented that it was going to look similar to a CMU wall, but we had more, more varieties and more options to do so.
So this is, this picture here is what's been approved?
Yes. Yes. The one on the left.
On the left, right. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the applicant?
Anything else I can't answer?
Um, Ms. Linderman, we've heard from you several times, so I, I see you standing there, so we're, we're finished with, uh, public testimony, and we're moving into, uh, final deliberation here. I am going to recommend, uh, the motion to the, the recommendations in the staff report with a couple of additions. Um, one, that we require cameras, uh, onsite, uh, security, uh, with the ability for the, uh, Sheriff's Department to, uh, look at them for a period of 30 days. Um, the, uh, the drive-thru would have a midnight cutoff, uh, and, uh, refer the sign back to, uh, staff and, um, Design Review Committee, understanding that the tenants want to have their logo, and they have to have a certain size, but that we look at something that might be a little more aesthetically advanced.
Second.
Did you want to propose a, you said, uh, drive-thru ends at midnight, do you want to have a t, time period when it can open again?
Like 6:00 AM or?
6:00 AM, I'd say.
Now we work for the tenant.
Five?
Five.
4:30 at the morning.
4:30, really?
Yep.
So it's 24, it's 24, is there any time?
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the nighttime, so opening at 4:30, a lot of people go to work that early. I don't know. Um, any other comments? So we had a second, uh, any final remarks before we vote? Please vote then.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you very much for spending your afternoon with us and for your suggestions on the aesthetics and some other things. So we'll move on to item 37.
Okay, item 37 are your nominations. You are continuing to February 27th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, the County Service Area 4C, Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, the Paratransit Incorporated Board of Directors, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, the Sacramento Environmental Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your items today, we have the Adult and Aging Commission. Ms. Peters?
First, could you clear the screens? Uh, mine, mine isn't clear.
Clear, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, please continue that February 27th.
Okay. The Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli.
We still have interviews pending, so we'd continue this, uh, ask, close the filing period, then continue February 27th for nomination.
The Community, uh, County Planning Commission, Ms. Frost?
I'd like to nominate Tina Polly to the Planning Commission and waive process so she can be appointed immediately.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Ms. Peters.
Please continue the 27th.
Okay.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. I picked up a page here. Uh, Chief's recommending reappointing, uh, Bonita Mallory as a school nurse representative, and nominating Dr. Kevin Keating for the dentist representative seat, and requests the process to be waived on Dr. Keating.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Continue the remainder of the 27th.
Got it. That concludes your nominations. And then your final item is, uh, well, not your final, but your next item is 38, your own ranks appointments to the boards and commissions. Um, I just want to point out that in your memo for the terms that have expired, I want to make a correction on the record that the Cal ID Rand Board, um, that's an indefinite seat. Uh, the only issue there will be dealt with for the, um, alternate seat. Uh, so I just want to make that correction, you don't need to-
I'm sorry, which?
I don't even remember hearing of that one.
Which board?
Cal ID Rand Board.
Correct.
Never heard of it.
Never heard of it either.
Technology, largely from the Sheriff's Department, so, and so, you know, there's funding that comes down through, and we have a seat on that, but it's not a District 5 seat, it's, it's a board seat.
Correct, but there's no action that needs to happen today. It was on the, um-
All right, so we're just going to the green seats?
We're, we are going to concentrate on the yellow seats.
The yellow seats?
Yes. So for the Adult and Aging Commission, um, Madam Chair, do you want me to just walk through the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. For your Adult and Aging Commission, um, do you want to reappoint, or do you have a new appointment for, uh, the designated seat? Currently, Cheryl Venegas is in that seat.
Would she like to continue?
Let me, I haven't chatted with her about it. I know she's been, you know, pretty faithful in attendance, so let me, um, if we can hold that over, Ma'am Chair, and I'll see what her preferences are.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, for the area for agency on aging, um, it's, if you want to reappoint, or if you have any new, the seats expire on, um, these are just for your alternates, they're one-term, one-year terms.
Anybody have any changes they'd like to make? Nope, okay.
And then, um, we are going to ignore the Cal ID Rand Board. Uh, the only question there is, we do not have an alternate, Mr. Natoli, um, at this point. Do you have any recommendations, or are we still okay with just having you?
So, am I supposed to attend these? Because there was some call to my office about not getting a quorum and so forth, so I had not been attending this. I didn't know if it rotated, because it said District 5.
I can follow up with you, uh, regarding the requirement.
So I don't know if it rotates with the chair or not, because I see that, um-
Is this, are you talking about the Cal ID Rand?
Yes, yeah.
I have never heard of that. Are you sure we have to go?
It's, yes, it's been on your own ranks for, for quite some time.
How can I, you know, sometimes these things-
I like where you're going with it, though.
And we referred to Nav Gill back a year ago.
Back to 71.
No, it says right here, it was referred to you in February of last year for an alternate and-
Aha, someone we can pin it on.
Yeah, it says right here.
We were, so, um, it was directed that we follow, that we tried to identify an alternate, which I, uh, did make an attempt to work with your office to do that.
My office? It didn't say referred to my office, it says referred to Nav Gill.
Let me, let me do this, um, let me find out more about it, and I'll come back on what we need to do.
Again, if they need something to attend, I mean, again, and I know, there's been a call to my office in recent days about this, and, and certainly I'm familiar with it. I, in fact, I served on it years ago when I was assistant to Toby Johnson, so it's like 25 years ago now, almost, so.
Flo, let, let's work on that when I come back.
Okay.
What it is?
We're going to find a technology committee for you, Don.
Yeah, I know, that's what I need, yeah.
You're going to need an iPhone-
They don't want my advice.
You know, you're going to need an iPhone X for that.
Yeah.
The next matter is the Criminal Justice Cabinet. Um, this is a chair or chair designee.
Uh, so currently Supervisor Kennedy is on that.
Correct. Supervisor Frost is the alternate.
Okay, so leave it the same.
Next is the Law Library Board of Trustees. Do you want to leave that the same? Currently, Robin, uh, our county counsel.
It's always county counsel, yeah.
And then, next, we have the Regional Human Rights Fair Housing Commission Governing Board. Uh, currently Kennedy is a member, Natoli is a member, and Supervisor Frost is an alternate. Are we leaving that the same?
Anybody, everybody okay with that? Okay?
It's 10 very valuable minutes of our time every year.
Well, that's the once-a-year one.
And then next is the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Do we want to leave this membership the same? We have Kennedy and Mr., Kennedy's a member, Ms. Natale is an alternate.
He'd like to stay.
Fine.
After that, we have the Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board. Two things, are we keeping the, excuse me, the only issue here is Supervisor Frost for your alternate. Currently, we have that vacant?
I don't have an alternate at this time.
Okay.
So I'll leave it vacant for now.
Okay. And then we have the Tobacco Securitization Corporation. Just pointing out that we still have a vacancy for the sixth seat. It's the designee seat.
One of the things you asked me last year was to look into, find somebody. I'm not having much luck with it, so we'll continue looking.
Okay.
Is there somebody from the business community that would be willing to join this for, we reach out to the Metro Chamber?
We did.
We did.
Yeah, we'll continue.
Now to the other chambers?
I'll think about GSAC next time at the board meeting.
Good luck with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Serna.
Does that, first of all, Madam Clerk, does that conclude the boards and commissions that are scheduled for us to review today?
Correct.
If it's appropriate, I would like to suggest for consideration a little bit of shuffling on the LAFCO Commission. I've had a conversation with Supervisor Frost, who's expressed an interest in serving as the principal member of LAFCO, and I am willing to nominate her to serve on that commission if she decides she wants to do it.
I'll second the nomination. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Could I just ask you, I don't see, the Delta Conservancy?
This is just what's renewing at this moment, maybe it's in years ahead of us.
Does Supervisor Serna then become the alternate on LAFCO?
I don't, that's a good question. I'm willing to, I suppose. Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have a shared alternate for the two board members? Is that how it works for LAFCO? Is that what you're talking about?
No, they're talking about the Delta Commission.
No, she's asking about LAFCO.
I was the alternate on LAFCO.
Oh, you backed up, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm willing to swap, or I'm willing to have someone else serve as the alternate. If there's any interest from me.
I don't see anyone stepping forward.
Yeah, it's got a conflict for me.
Okay, all right. So Mrs. Serna will be the alternate on LAFCO. Did you solve the Delta Commission?
No, the Delta Conservancy. So we have, yeah, we have the Protection Commission, so Delta Conservancy, I guess, serves as the primary and Don Thomas has served as the alternate for the board.
Supervisor Natale, that one just jogged my memory. I need to work with Flo because I need to come back to you on that piece with Don Thomas being the alternate.
Okay. He's done a good job. He's served for me, he goes for me sometimes, so...
He's doing a great job, that's not the issue.
Yeah, okay, all right. But I don't see it on here, it just said, so I don't, there's a...
It's not up for renewal, it's an indefinite, so we, as personnel changes, we need to come bring that back.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing else. That concludes my notes.
Any Supervisor comments?
Yes.
Ms. Frost?
I wanted to close in memory of a friend in Citrus Heights, but before doing so, I was wanting to request Nav if you would, if we could take a look at the civil service rule as relates to veterans and ask staff to just kind of review it and see what's going on with other counties in the state and see if we can update it. I've had some inquiries around that.
Okay.
And then I wanted to close in memory of a good friend from Citrus Heights, Jerry Carl Smith, who is also affectionately known as Chappy, was born on April 11, 1943, and passed on December 21, 2017. Jerry served in the United States Navy from 1964 to 67, and then served and retired from the California Army National Guard. He was the post chaplain for the American Legion Post 637 in Citrus Heights, California, where he was nicknamed Chappy and was one of the post chaplains who also participated in the No Soldier Dies Alone program. Jerry earned an associate's degree from the Sacramento City College in 1967 and continued to receive a bachelor's degree in political science from the California State University Sacramento in 1973, and political science standards secondary teaching and learning handicapped credentials in '75. He was assistant Cub Scout master for the LDS PAC 54, member of Sacramento Storytellers Guild, granted LDS Aaronic priesthood. And for recreation, Jerry enjoyed striped black bass and deep sea fishing. He is survived by his wife and son, who live in Citrus Heights. And I just wanted to mention Jerry. He, I've known Jerry for a few years, and during my work with the American Legion, he's a devoted friend and has always been there to help anyone who asked, including me during my years as mayor. Jerry was there when I had all these projects going on as one of the volunteers that helped me put things together. He was, played an important role in helping us plan for the Battle of the Bands and Barbecues, which is a wonderful fundraiser for our veterans in Citrus Heights every year. He was a spiritual leader, and every veteran event opened with one of Chappy's beautiful, well-written prayers. He was thoughtful and a very intelligent man, a great father and a great friend, and he always had a positive outlook. Even in his last days, when I was visiting him in the hospital a couple of times, he was thumbs up. And we will miss you, Chappy, and may you rest in eternal peace.
Thank you. Mr. County Executive, did you have any comments?
None.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Oh, I was just going to say, the mystery is solved. The Conservancy is under Sacramento-Salwaken Delta Conservancy on page four, and it is listed, so...
You were looking under D.
Yeah, I was looking under D too. So it is there and it has, it has me as the primary and Don Thomas as the...
Yes, it does, yes.
Yeah, so it's listed, so, thank you. Let me take away from the...
Okay, so we're going to adjourn today in memory of Jerry Carl Smith.